Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the council meeting for August 16, 2010. To order first thing on the agenda, as always, is roll call. Determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Davis, Haddock, Kroger, Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thank you. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or pager, we would certainly appreciate it if you would turn that off or put in the silent or the vibrate mode. Also, if you would like to speak to any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, we do have speak request forms that look like this, to your left or right. If you could please fill that out and put the item number so as we work our way down the agenda, that we'll make sure that we do not overlook you. Just a reminder, we do have different segments within our meeting tonight. We do time those. Those are three minutes per person, and so you'll be seeing the lights and we'll remind people of that. Next thing on the agenda, as always, is invocation. And our invocation tonight is given by Pastor Troy Carr from Faith Temple. So if you'd all please rise for the invocation and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Today, we thank you for your blessings of grace and mercy. God, your word says that if anyone lack wisdom that we can ask of you. God, I pray that you would give these council members the wisdom to make decisions pleasing in your sight. Ask that you would bless them, bless the mayor, that you would touch all our elected officials in this state. In thy son Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Pastor. Nice to see you. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be added to the agenda tonight? If so, please turn on your light. Coach Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Under items from older persons, I'd like to add an item called Discussion of Changing the Name of the 2012 Fund to Vision Fund.
Okay, we'll call that eighty-two A. Okay, any additional items to be added to tonight's agenda? Please turn on your light. Any additional items? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of an eighty-two A. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the August 2, 2010 city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We now go to awards and recognitions versus our Veteran of the Month. And Don, I'll have you come up here to the podium with me. There we go. You know, it's always a pleasure to recognize those that have served us through their service in the armed services. You know, our freedoms that we enjoy today were paid literally through the sacrifice that these brave men and women have provided throughout history. With that, let me read a little bit about our Veteran of the Month for August 2010. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the 2010 August Veteran of the Month recognition to Donald W. Seelock. Now, Donald served in the United States Air Force from July 1, 1961, to December 12, 1968. Over the course of his time in the Air Force, he was stationed at North Dakota, Washington, Mississippi, Hawaii, and Okinawa. He then joined the South Dakota National Guard in August of 1976, where he was a nuclear, biological, and chemical NCO for the 153rd Engineering Battalion in Huron. And for those of you, good things always come from Huron, right? I'm from Huron. He retired from the National Guard in 1989. He's a past commander of the American Legion Post Seven in Huron and past Beetal County Chairman. Don is currently active, let's see, Donald is currently an active member of the 48th Eight in Rapid City. He contributes many hours to the disabled American veterans before becoming a member, and he now enjoys his work in the DAV at Fort Meade VA Hospital. He was nominated for his recognition with the highest compliment, quote, "He is always willing to help his fellow veterans whenever possible." Mr. Seelock is to be commended for his service to his country and to the city of Rapid City. Don, congratulations. Would you like to say a word to him?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm honored to get this award. I'm doing a job at Fort Meade. I've been up there for four years now. I'm the hospital services coordinator at Fort Meade. I take care of the veterans up there. I do claims for them. I provide transportation for them, for all of West River, actually. My area covers Mowbridge to Winter, Scotts Bluff to Baker, Montana, and everything in between. So I cover a lot of territory. I love the job, so that's why I'm still doing it. Thank you.
Marcia, why don't you go ahead and come on up. One of the other things that we get to do from time to time is recognize long-term employees that have served our community so well. Marcia Elkins is no exception to that. She has served Rapid City for 20 years. She is our Growth Management Director. As a matter of fact, I go back almost 15 years when I was first appointed, actually, to the variance Board of Appeals and then later to the Planning Commission, and so I've known Marcia throughout the years. And I tell you what, no one works harder than Marcia. I'm going to have Marcia just give us a little bit about her background, but I will tell you, Marcia is truly an asset for our community and we're fortunate to have her. Marcia, do you want to say just a few words?
Notice he says just a few words. He usually has a gavel up there to control me, so. The mayor's the only person I know of who's ever annexed their property into the city so they could serve on a city board, so he's very special. Some of you know that when I moved to Rapid City in 1990, I didn't know a soul here, and I count among numerous people on the council, mayors, developers, people in the public. They're my friends now, and so this is my community, and I'm very pleased to work here. I'm also very proud of the staff that we've put together in the Growth Management Department. Over the years, our role has changed a number of times, but we have incredibly dedicated people that work very hard for each and every one of you. You probably don't know it, but sometimes we answer the phone around here at 6:00 a.m., and yes, we do answer the phone, and I'm always a little surprised that somebody who's a citizen will call and actually expect that we'll pick it up. But there are people here, early in the morning, late at night, working hard because they care about the city of Rapid City, and I'm very proud to work with those folks, with the council, the quality of these folks here, and the mayors, all who are very dedicated to this community. So, thank you for the opportunity to work here.
Dave, why don't you bring Richie up also? Now, here's someone who now has been around for a little while. Richie Nordstrom has been with the city of Rapid City 30 years, 30 years. And with that, Dave Van Cleve is going to give us a little bit about Richie's history and his contributions to the city of Rapid City. Dave?
Well, I haven't been around 30 years like Richie, but I've known him for, well, half of his career, anyway, and actually met him 26 years ago when I was here for an internship with the city, and it was his first year with the wastewater department. Richie is kind of the face of the wastewater department because he does the inspections on over 500 commercial and industrial establishments in the city, making sure that they meet the local and state regulations and federal regulations, and so he works hard with that. He is also, on occasion, a septic inspector and is helping out with that program, and he and his partner Judy are very active in the community, and I mean active because Richie helps teach dance lessons for the recreation program, and they've been doing that for quite a while now. So, I'd just like to thank Richie for his dedication and appreciate all you've done, Richie. Thank you.
I want to thank Dave Van Cleve for the very kind words that he's mentioned here. And without people like Dave Van Cleve and the mayor, and a lot of people that surround me that make my job real easy, so this last 30 years has gone by pretty fast. It really has. And I want to welcome some of the new people that are to the city and look forward to them taking over and running the reins of the city. So, thank you very much for this. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. It's always important to recognize those that have served us, both through our military and also through their employment here at the city. Next item on the agenda is General Public Comment Period. This is time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the public or to the council on any issues not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. We do have an item three, which is a request from Dana Deville, and this is dealing with 34 St. Pat Street. Now, there again, just a reminder, we do time this. There is a three-minute time, and so if you please come forward and identify yourself for the record. And Sheila, what I would do is, let's take Dana first, and then if you want to speak, then we can give you three additional minutes. If that's, that'll give you a little bit more flexibility. With that, sir, why don't you identify yourself, and then the floor is yours.
We replaced a roof on 34 St. Pat. We covered over it, not knowing that there was ever a building permit required, which was never required by the city to have. Everybody has said that we could go over one layer, and that's what the contractor did. The insurance companies will approve this. The FHA, the VA will approve this. The people, I had the house for sale. That is the reason why we were doing this, because they wanted a new shingle on there, and they are more than willing to accept the house the way it is with no problems. And I guess we're looking for a little help that there's really nothing wrong with the way the roof was put on, and it looks very nice and improved. I think everybody has received this through the email, how it looks, and all that.
Very good. Anything else, Dana?
I think.
Yes, we, I think everyone has received that.
Yes, I believe they have.
Okay. With that, Sheila, did you want to, if you would, go ahead?
I did help Dana and put this packet together. I'm sorry.
Sheila, just for the record, could you please state your name before we get started?
Sheila Tom.
Thank you, Sheila.
Sorry, yes. And thank you all for entertaining us and allowing us to speak to you. I have sent all of you the packet of information. We've learned a lot as we've gone along, based on what the city rules are, which were unknown to us, and as you can tell from the information, unknown to the insurers, unknown to the appraisers, unknown to the lending institutions, unknown to the home inspectors, and unknown to all the Realtors that I've been in contact with and talked to. So, what we want is just to ask you to either consider granting a variance to this one issue or stay the enforcement of this rule, and maybe just allow the violation to be put in the file, and then at the time, the next time that a roof is needing to be replaced, by then, you know, everybody will be on notice that that needs to happen. Because we've not, we had no notice. We didn't get any notice until someone made a complaint, and as the last square of shingles went on, the inspector asked that we remove it. We just sort of feel like the city's rule is kind of like, don't ask, don't tell, and that it is, you know, one of those situations where there are houses all over this town that are having roofs put on overlaying one layer of shingles. And until there is a rule or some way through a building permit or some other way that any of us can be put on notice, I just ask that Mr. Deville, his home be somehow given a variance for this, or that you just stay the enforcement of that rule on this one case, because otherwise, you know, there are so many people that have that. Are we going to go out and police that? Are we going to go and turn everybody in because they have made the mistake of not knowing what the city rule was because there was no notice? So, that's what we're here to ask for. We understand we're going to the DARB committee, which we didn't know existed either, but we will follow those rules, but we're asking you to consider staying this enforcement of this rule in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. We also have a speak request form from James Byalato. James, my apologies if I didn't get it right, but if you would please pronounce it, and then the floor will be yours.
My name is James Byala. I'm a Rapid City contractor. I own Byalata Carpentry and Homes. I'm here to comment on the same issue. It's unfortunate that the homeowners are cited. Is it accurate? Yes. The person to blame? Contractor. Contractor's full knowledge of these matters. I mean, this ordinance has been in effect for two years. If the city's going to waive this, I want to be paid back for all the ice and snow I laid on all my roofs and all the ones that I refused to do because they wanted to go over the top because other contractors said it was okay. The issues at hand are, you're going to show that if you allow this, every contractor is going to know it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission to do it right in the first place. The other issues are, is the homeowners are right. There's not enough enforcement. Meade County, Sturgis, even Somerset, all enforce it very strictly. They have a fine. When I talk to the Growth Management Department about contractors like this, the guy doesn't have a license, so the city can't touch him. If there was a fine system in place, they could cite and fine the contractor immediately, and the homeowners would have an easier chance of going back into court going, hey, here's a notice saying the contractor was cited and fined. You take it into small claims court, it makes their road a little easier. Otherwise, homeowners are getting used and abused by contractors that just refuse to follow laws. This is a simple ordinance. If anybody had called the city and asked, I'm sure they would have told you. I call in all the time as a contractor. If I have a question about something, the way it is, the way it might be grandfathered in, I call and ask the city first. I don't do the work and then ask for forgiveness afterwards. Am I paying the price? Sometimes. Sometimes I lose bids because I refuse to bend to the rules, but the fact of the matter is, if you allow this to go on and you allow this to go, every contractor in town's not going to worry about their license, their license requirements, or the code anymore. That includes permits and revenue. Permits draw a lot of revenue for the city. If you guys started fining illegal contractors, that could also be a source of revenue. That's all I have. I spoke, I spoke into the city's attorney. I know I've spoken to Marcia in Growth Development. I spoke to Sam Quaker. I spoke to Mayor Hanks. Everybody is aware of this problem. I've sat on contractors' boards and spoke to them about it. They need something from the council that says, we're going to stop this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from George Bartlett. And there's no item number, so Mr. Bartlett, if you would just go ahead and identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours, sir.
George Bartlett, 2345 Homestead, Lot 19, Rapid City. I'll have three minutes. I'll speak quickly. How? This community of Rapid City is racist in every thought, word, and deed, every facet of society. Consecutive racism is, I'm now coining it. One store, one food store, where the manager commits an act of racism, I leave and go to another store. The second store in the same building or adjacent to the shop, this second store follows suit and commits the same racially motivated incident. Racially motivated Caucasians find loopholes in federal and state laws. So historically, Indians lose lawsuits, and we can never win discrimination complaints. If I do anything such as unprovoked verbal assault and return the verbal assault and racial slur in windows in kind, in public, the Rapid City Police Department cannot arrest me, then hate groups such as Skinheads Freeman Militia are called in to deal with me. Or do all kinds of crimes against me. As long as bigotry, hatred, bias, partiality, injustice, unsolved murders of Indians, unsolved beatings, assaults, hospitalization of Indians, institutions such as U.S. Commission on Civil Rights, ACLU, American Indian Movement, Santee, National Council of Churches, NCAA, National Urban League, Better Business Bureau, EEO, and inequality will continue to exist. We as Locota will never achieve true equality in this state of South Dakota. Amen.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Jay Davis. And this is dealing with the Horus Man Pool. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor Hanks and members of the council. I'm not speaking tonight on behalf of any organization, although I am a member of the Horus Man Pool Task Force, which hasn't met for probably too long, and also the North Rapid Civic Association. First of all, I want to commend the action of this council and of the subcommittee making Horus Man one of the approved projects for the 2012 program. This park clearly is a jewel in our park system, but it does need some upgrades and some tender loving care, and the fact that it's for a long time been leaking, the pool's been leaking onto Anamosa Street is something that's overdue for attention. Having said that, I stand in opposition to the proposal to move the 50-meter pool from Horus Man Park to Roosevelt Park for a number of reasons. I think whoever designed the pool in its current location with the panoramic view not only of Cowboy Hill but of Harney Peak and the main range of the Black Hills surely knew what they were doing. It's a very attractive location. Yes, we've got heavy clay soil, primarily bentonite, up on that hill, and if the pool, if the 50-meter pool is going to be put back right where it is, which is what I hope this council will ultimately decide to do, there need to be pilings. I mean, it's an engineering problem, but it needs to be put in right so that it won't tilt and so it won't leak. I think with the alternative location down in the flood plain along the creek, you would also need pilings, so that comparison may be a wash. This pool's been too much of a well-kept secret over the years, and I would credit parks and recreation with doing more to advertise its location, that in recent years the city has put up signs along Haynes Avenue pointing towards the location of the pool, but this is certainly a recreational asset that we ought to promote more to visitors to our city during the summer. Adding zero-depth and splash pools or, you know, family-type recreation pools in the park to augment and complement the existing 50-meter pool is certainly a positive idea. There's nothing wrong with having both at the same location, especially if the Pony League is ultimately likely to pull out of there. I think there's plenty of room. I think there's room for adequate parking. For what it's worth, within the last year, the North Rapid Civic Association unanimously passed a resolution in support of keeping the 50-meter pool right where it is. And I don't see any reason to believe that that sentiment has changed. It's an asset not only to North Rapid but to all of West River. So, I just hope that as this 2012 process moves forward, that this council will give favorable consideration not only to rehabilitating the pool and the park, but also to keeping the 50-meter pool in its exceptionally scenic location where it's really well-suited. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Alice McCoy. And this also is dealing with the Horus Man Pool. Again, Alice, if you please identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Thank you very much for having me up here. Anyhow, I'm Alice McCoy, and I'm president of the North Rapid Civic, and the reason I'm late is because we had our officers meeting. And without taking this back to a North Rapid Civic meeting, all I can speak on is I've had a number of members that have called me and basically voiced, like Jay Davis said, and we have, we have talked about it at many meetings, and we've always wanted to keep the pool like it is. Now, you can add stuff to it, that's fine, but we don't really want to lose our pool that we have now, and the officers voted tonight to have me come and remind you of this, so that's what I'm here for. And, but I would be willing to, you know, if you give us a few, some days, some time, we'd be willing to take it back to the membership and have a revote and let you, whoever from your group can, come and explain what exactly you are looking at and take another vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice. We also have, under General Public Comment Period, we also have a speaker request form from Bruce Meister on the bid assessment. Again, Bruce, if you please identify yourself, and the floor is yours, sir.
My name's Bruce Meister. And, oh, here, a few days ago, I got a letter, certified mail, from the city, and it notified me of the amount of my tax for the Business Improvement District. I didn't know that certified mail was all that necessary. I suppose my, I don't know if I'm just to consider that as a bill or if I'm going to get another bill, but I heard, I don't get the paper. I heard from some other people that if I don't have it paid with, by a certain date, well, then the city's going to charge me 9% interest. Now, it didn't say anything about any interest on the letter that I received by certified mail, and I think 9% interest is And I think 9% interest is pretty darn steep. I don't know, it's been a lot, a lot of years since I've made 9% interest on my, on any of my money. I think that's, you know, borderline extortion. Anyway, I just wanted to comment about the 9% interest.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Mary Renka, also on the bid assessment.
Mary Renka, 528 Quincy Street. I'm as dismayed to be here again before you as I'm sure a lot of you are dismayed to see me. We will be filing a lawsuit, and I'd hoped it would have been filed by now, but evidently the recession has not extended to attorneys, and our attorney is backlog. The lawsuit will be filed based on the unconstitutionality of the assessed, I don't know how you're doing it, on the assessment. I'm going to read from Article 10 of the Constitution, just part of it. "But such tax shall be uniform in respect to persons and property within the jurisdiction of the body levying the same." I would also hope that if we do go ahead and pay these assessments, and I'm certainly not going to withhold my assessment, that when the time comes that you have to pay the assessment back to us when we win in the courts, that you'll pay me 9% interest, too. I'd really appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. That is all the speaker requests forms that I have for the General Public Comment Period. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak that has not had the opportunity yet? Anyone else? Very good. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the non-public hearing items. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Mayor, item number three was, was published on the agenda so that there could be discussion and possible action by the, by the council. So, if we could go back to item number three and discuss that for a moment, please.
I'm going to go to Jason. Are we all right with that, or? Okay. Very good. Mr. Quaker, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. I have a question for our city attorney. Jason, my understanding is, is your recommendation is that this item would be, would go to the Development and Appeals Review Board, also known as the DAR Board. Does the DAR Board, based on the facts presented tonight, does the DAR Board have the authority to grant the request that Mr. DeVille is seeking?
Jason Green, city attorney.
The, it's, the DAR Board will sit as one of the Building Code Boards of Appeals, same people, but to answer the question directly, I believe that they have the authority to approve alternative methods or materials, but the burden will be on the applicant to show that they meet the true intent of the code. And I believe that's the language from the ordinance directly. The council does not have the ability to grant any variance at this point. Only the, only the DAR Board would.
And our decision, Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Are decisions of the DAR Board appealable to the city council?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
No, they're not.
Okay. So, does the, does the city council have the authority to, to deny or to grant this request from Mr. DeVille then, tonight?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. By your ordinance, you do not.
Okay. So then what I would like to do is, I would like to discuss this in the broader context, which I believe is, is a fair discussion. It is time that we have a uniform enforcement of this section of the code, or not have this section of the code at all. Because I think what we're doing is we're putting homeowners in a very difficult position of hiring a contractor that they believe to be licensed. Contractor turned out not to be licensed, but then the burden comes on the, on the homeowner and, and not the contractor. And we have really a complaint-based enforcement for something this important. We should really have a more proactive approach so that other homeowners aren't caught in this kind of a bind. So, I don't know if our Public Works or Growth Management Directors have any thoughts on this, but I think that we need to take a step back from this situation, perhaps look at some amendments for the code that was previously passed several years ago, and try to figure out how to keep other homeowners from getting caught in the same bind.
Did you want to?
Marsha.
Let's go to Marsha Elkins, Growth Management Director.
I'll just remind the council that the last time the code was adopted, the 2000 code, 2006 code, the Residential Contractors Board recommended to the council that they require building permits for re-roofing, such as this case. The council chose not to implement that requirement. We're in the process of considering the 2009 amendments, and that will be an issue, I suspect, that the Residential Contractors Board will again bring forward to you. But that, again, would ensure that licensed residential contractors are doing the work. Those are the folks that keep themselves up to speed on the requirements. They're notified when the codes are updated and given the opportunity to provide comments during public meetings that the council's asked us to have. So, that may be one of the items you want to consider in the future.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor. Anything else? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've struggled with this one since it's been brought to my attention, to understand basically the fact of, it's in the code, but I don't understand the intent of the code. These people are going to be challenged with going to the DAR Board to see that they met the intent of the code, of the code. But without understanding the intent of the code, I don't think that anybody would be able to meet that criteria. So, my question would be for Mr. Green, and, and my question is, is what is the intent of the code?
Mr. Green, do you understand the question?
I do. And I can probably only answer it in very general terms. The intent of the code is to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Now, these documents, which you're required to adopt if you adopt building codes, are nationally published. There's a lot of commentary out there on that. I believe that you could probably find information in the commentary about the intent of the drafters of those codes particularly. And I suspect that that would give guidance as to what would need to be presented as, as support for a request for an alternative means.
Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor, sir.
Well, my point is, is tonight, these people want their problem resolved. This problem is not a problem just specific to them. It's specific to hundreds of people in our community. So, if the intent of the code was for substantial safety, putting a new layer of shingles on someone's house, to me, would make sense that it meets the code. Unfortunately, it spells out that you need to remove the old shingles to put the new shingles on with whatever intention that may be. We are unable to even identify here. So, putting these people to the DAR Board is like a dog chasing his tail. It's going to be an endless loop. And I understand that there needs to be some sort of reform going forward. I understand that. That makes sense, but that's not the problem that we're faced with tonight. I mean, we can go on and on and on about comprehensive reform and how we seem to pit because of the way we enforce our rules. We pass rules up here, do Feed the Ducks, Don't Feed the Ducks, those types of things, but we're not going to enforce it, these types of things. What it ends up doing is taking these neighborhoods and pitting neighbors against each other, which goes absolutely against the process in which a community should function within. And I'm hoping that we can find a simple resolution that makes sense. Would it make sense to, to require a licensed contractor to put a roof on? Yeah, that would make sense. Would it make sense to have a building permit? That would make sense. But in this case, and in several similar cases of people throughout this neighborhood, probably me included, have two layers of shingles on our roof. So, if we make these people remove their shingles because of the code, then we should go through and make everybody do it. And just in the verse of, we heard a contractor saying today, if we don't make them do that, then he needs to get a, we need to give him a refund for everything that he's pulled off of the roofs. But if it's probably a good practice to pull your shingles off, it's not necessarily that important to do so. I mean, it's been a practice that I can recall for, ever since I was a kid, I've seen people put on two layers of shingles to, to protect the old shingles, especially when you're at a point of, of no return, when you're, when you're, you know, the recessions hit, the money is not available to do those types of things. Insurance companies will insure the roof without any problem. So, you, you've met the safety standard, or the health standard, or whatever standard it may be. It doesn't jeopardize a homeowner that purchases this house, doesn't put them in any other peculiar situation that they wouldn't otherwise be in if they removed the shingles and put another, another layer on there or not. Lenders will lend on the house with two, two layers of shingles on the house. That's not an issue. So, I don't understand how they could ever meet the intent of, of a law, basically, they, they were put in a situation, not understanding what happened. And I'm not saying build it and be forgiven. I don't think that's the case here in any way, shape, or form. I think it's a case of, of maybe some intent that we are, our city attorney can't even really answer, but yet we're going to try to get these people out here to answer the intent. I'm not sure where we go from here, but I think if there's a way we could repeal this ordinance today, let these people move on in their life and come back and redo this thing right, with a, with a purpose and an intent, and one that doesn't pit neighbors against each other in their own neighborhoods. That's how our code enforcement's done throughout our city right now. It pits neighbors against each other in these types of situations. So, I'll yield the floor to my colleagues.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I've been reviewing over this case, and just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, but Ms. Elkins, is it my understanding that the code and, that Mr. and Ms. DeVille are apparently in violation of, is that the ice shield barrier of 1513420 for building code?
Marsha.
There's an ice shield, ice barrier, I think is actually the language, that is not installed as I understand it. And there's also a requirement that there only be one layer of asphalt shingles.
Mr. Mason, you still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. And I guess I would also like to ask a question to Mr. Bielota. Thank you. Concerning, actually, the comment from our city attorney, Mr. Green, about the safety, and if you could actually elaborate on what, yes, please, sir, on how this is a safety issue.
Let your mic come on just in a second here. Give it a try now.
There's two issues at fact. The ice and water shield prevents wood and water damage rot on the eaves of the roof. On some of these older homes, like in Robinsdale, there's no overhang on the eaves. So, if the framing rots out on the edge, the framing members drop and crush the house. The second problem is, is the shingles made currently, the architectural shingles, are much heavier than past triple-tab shingles. And when you add the weight of previous shingles, architectural shingles, and the snow load allowance for the Rapid City area, you put additional stresses on the framing members.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Thank you. So, it's my understanding that this is a structural integrity issue, then. And with that, I guess, I just really wanted clarification on the degree of safety that we're talking about, and I appreciate the information, Mr. Bielota.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to, Marsha, did you have something to add? Let's go to Marsha Elkins, Growth Management Director.
I did speak with Brad Solon, building official. He's on vacation this week, or he would be here tonight. But one of the other aspects of this, and the reasons for these requirements, is the property damage that occurs when there are hail storms. The specific requirement that we refer to does reference the fact that Rapid City is in a moderate to severe hail exposure area. And apparently, the research that's been done indicates that there will be more damage that will occur when there is a second layer of asphalt shingles. And so, there's also another reason that the code addresses that there be a single layer.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. One from, of Marsha, Growth Management.
Okay. Go ahead, please.
Marsha, a couple, Dana and Sheila both have made mention of the fact that there was no notification given of the code change, and apparently, this is something that has taken place in just the last year and a half or two years. What is the process for us to notify the public of a change in the building code? And was this process applied to this particular building code?
Marsha.
First step is that the council selects, the mayor actually appoints, and then the council endorses a, a committee to review the code. It's typically done for residential code by the Residential Contractors Board. They review the code in detail. They take forward recommendations, and the council has asked us to have a public meeting. We notify by postcard every residential contractor that is licensed with us, and invite them to a meeting. At the meeting that, when this was adopted, Mr. Bielota was there, and that was one of the comments that came forward, was the need for building permits. Then it comes forward to the council, goes through the Legal and Finance Committee, to the council's adoption as an ordinance on first and second reading, went through the committee on two occasions, and was finally adopted. There was more discussion about the issue of the requirement for re-roofing permits, because that was an issue that had been brought forward. And again, as I noted, the council chose not to include that permit requirement.
Mr. Davis, Sheila, still have the floor, sir.
Thank you. Marsha, just a continuation of that question. So, we, we go through the notification process as you outlined. Obviously, we don't require a building, a contractor's license to put a roof on, so they're not necessarily required to show up at this particular meeting. But one of the comments that was made to me by Dana and Sheila both was that they had checked with building, with licensed building contractors around town, and they were not aware of this code either. Any explanation as to why, I mean, is simply they didn't come to the meeting? Is that?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins.
My recollection is there was probably 20 people at the evening meeting that we had when we invited folks in. That's probably less than 10% of the contractors that were contacted about the meeting.
Okay. All right. That helps on that. If I may, I have a question for city attorney Jason Green as well.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, turning the tide 180 degrees the other way, is there any action that this council can take tonight that will help the DeVilles?
Mr. Green, city attorney.
Not with the issue that they currently face. That has to go to the DAR Board. If the council wants to look at amending the procedures that, that are required to appeal, you could do that, but that will require an ordinance change. If you want to look at amending the substantive requirements of the code, for example, to allow dual layers of shingles, or to require a building permit, that will also require an ordinance amendment. Both of those take a minimum of two readings, plus 20 days for publication. So, best-case scenario, you're probably looking at eight weeks.
But to clarify, for them to expedite the sale of their house, there is no action that this board, that this council can take tonight that will help them in that respect?
Mr. Green.
I don't believe so, no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My questions are mainly centered around how we got to this point. I dare for Marsha Elkins, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Marsha, I apologize, but I'm still a bit unclear on just how long the rule has been on the books, requiring, one, the ice barrier, and, two, the removal of shingles, thus allowing only one layer of shingles per residence.
Marsha.
The requirement for one layer of shingles in the high hail, moderate-high hail area was part of the last adoption of the code, the 2006, which I believe was about 18 months ago. I believe the ice barrier requirement has been in place longer than that. If you'll let me consult my notes, I think Mr. Solon indicated that that had been in place in the 2003 code, which is probably four, five years ago.
Thank you very much, Marsha. I'm just going to end with, with a personal observation. It's my experience that oftentimes, people choose to be ignorant of things so that they can claim ignorance as an excuse. And to quote a phrase I've been told a few times in my lifetime, ignorance of the law is no excuse, and it's the responsibility of contractors to educate themselves, for what it's worth. A yield.
Okay. Very good. Any further discussion? We have no motion on the floor. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still think that trying to establish the intent, and then we're going to tell these people that they got to go figure out what the intent is, we can't even figure it out. We obviously made the law. If the intent is safety, and an insurance company is going to pay the loss on this hail damage, and there's no difference. They don't, they don't charge, if there was a safety issue for the structural integrity of the roof, then why would you have home inspectors wondering why you require two levels of shingles? And the other thing is, is the hail thing. I mean, if it's an insurance company, they know risk more than anybody. They don't, they don't require anything more for two levels of shingles or, or not. I think the issue here is whether you have a licensed contractor or a building permit. I think if you're, if the intent of the law, or that our ordinance was to protect the people, then we should have required a building permit. There's no other way for these people to know. Absolutely no way. I think that this is a quagmire, and it's frustrating, and it's, it reminds me of the Melody Acres thing. If we need to have two special council meetings to repeal this ordinance, I feel we should have two special council meetings to repeal this ordinance, I feel we should do it. We have special council meetings for people that want to build parks, and I made mention of this last time. These people, just because it's an individual person, we can't accommodate them. I think this council needs to think about what our mission is in treating everyone the same. If we need to have a special council meeting to get this resolved, and then move forward, and then come back with a clear intent, and require a building permit, so everybody's knowledgeable of it, I think that that would be appropriate. So, I'd be willing to make a motion to repeal this, and have two special council meetings, if that's what it takes. If there's a timeframe, then we have them within the timeframes to get it repealed, we start over, and we go look at the code. They talk about the code. You want to talk about the code being, I talked about the code tonight. There's errors in the code. There's a refund policy in the building code, but that's okay, because it errors against little people again. In our building code, there is a refund policy that would, us be able to refund money to Melody Acres, but because that's an error, we can't do it. And I mean, I simply think that this is a quagmire, and we're setting these people up for failure. I don't agree with this. I think we should, we can cure this by removing the code, coming back and redoing it with a purpose that makes sense, and an intent that's legitimate. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question for the city attorney.
Go ahead, please.
Jason, we could change this ordinance to allow a double layer of shingles, could we not?
Jason.
You could change the ordinance to do that, yes, but it doesn't help the situation, because it's going to be governed by the law in effect at the time the action was taken.
That's very true, but we have asked you to withhold from taking any action until something's been done in the past. Have we not?
Jason.
The council has directed that enforcement be stayed. You have done that, yes.
Okay. So, we do have the ability to do that. I guess, the big concern that I have in, I guess I can probably understand it two ways, one layer, two layers, but the individuals that have the biggest investment in that roof are the insurance company and the lender, and both of them allow a double layer of shingles. So, in one hand, it really amazes me that, you know, we have this ordinance, and we're concerned about two layers of shingles, but if we have fascia rotting off of houses, and we have all kinds of things wrong with houses, we can't enforce people to do anything, but we can enforce them to have one layer of shingles versus two, which to me, sometimes, does not make sense, because it's a safety hazard and rotting fascia, or whatever it might be on a house. And when we have people that are willing to insure a home that has a double layer of shingles on it, and they're willing to loan hundreds of thousands of dollars on a house that has double shingle, or layer of shingles on, then I think we should have the bill in our code to allow a double layer of shingles. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. After thinking about this, and the comments by Alderman Wyffenbach, and also Alderman Costello, I can't help but reflect on the intent of the law and the protection of the people, but with that, I'm just wondering, and I guess I'm making the comment, that we should take into consideration that the people, as per the documents added, have taken it upon themselves to agree to the terms in this, and it seems that they are willing to take that. And I guess the second question, idea, and question that I have is whether or not this is just. I agree with Alderman Costello that ignorance of the law is no excuse, however, one can always question whether the law is just. And I guess I'm wondering if there's any alternative to ensure the structural integrity of the building, instead of just going by the weight ratio, if there's something alternatively these people could do to ensure the safety of the house, rather than completely remove the house at a less cost. And I guess I would ask that question of our Growth Management Director, Marcia Elkins.
Let's go to Marcia Elkins.
My understanding is that is the discussion that would need to appear before the Appeals Board, in this case, the DARB sitting as the Building Appeal Board, and it would be incumbent on the applicant to provide that documentation, that they've proposed some alternate that addresses that issue, is the way I understand the information that's been provided to me by the city attorney's staff.
Yep. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Ms. Elkins, then, it's my understanding that if they can come up with an alternative that would support the intent of the law, which is the structural integrity, is it my understanding of the house, that they would be able to move on without re-roofing? Is that?
Marcia.
Again, the language that's been provided by the attorneys talk about alternate material design or method of construction that needs to be provided to the, in this case, the DARB Board, sitting as the International Residential Code Appeals Board, for their consideration in that regard.
Thank you. I guess I would just end in, end with this idea that I guess I do like the recommendation by Alderman Wyffenbach to actually take a look at this law, and actually what the intention is, and further offer some possible alternatives within the code itself, under 1513-420, that could further fulfill the intention of this law without narrowing it down to such a narrow scope. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. So, are we allowed to offer a motion to bring forward ordinance amendments for further discussion at one of the committees?
Yes.
Okay. Before I offer the ordinance amendments, I want to make a comment as to my, as to my reasoning. I think that there was an error made in adding the requirement for one layer to the, to the new version of the code several years ago, without a communication plan and without an inspection plan. We should have, we should have either left that requirement out of the code, or we should have put it in the code with mandatory inspection and licensing requirements. By doing it, by doing it halfway, we created confusion all around. So, I think we need to have a comprehensive review on this, before I offer a motion to, to draft the, an ordinance amendment to repeal the provision on, on allowing only one layer of shingles. I would like to ask our fire chief a question, and the fire, and the question, Mike, is this, is, and if you need more time to research this, that's fine, but what is your understanding of having more than one layer of shingles on a roof relates to the job that you and your guys do?
Chief, the only thing that I would weigh in on is what the contractor pointed out earlier with the question that was posed to him in reference to the weight. Anytime you deal with a single family dwelling that was built with lightweight construction, two-by-fours and things like that, and you put extra load on that roof, at the time, it was probably designed for lighter shingle. Now, the shingles are heavier. They're, we're using different building materials these days. There is definitely a safety concern for us if we're on that roof, and there is an attic fire with an extra load. Based on experience on fires, older houses with multiple layers of shingles, I would say that those roofs probably fail earlier, under fire conditions. So, with that.
Thank you, Chief. Alderman Quaker, you have the floor.
I would like to offer a twofold motion, and the motion is to ask the city attorney's office to bring forward ordinance amendments of the next Legal and Finance Committee meeting to do the following. One is to allow decisions of the Development Appeal Review Board to be appealed to the city council, and the second is an ordinance amendment for, or to require inspections on roofing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Jason's all right to do it that way, I think it is, yeah. Okay, very good. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We will move on. We're on to the consent calendar. This is items four through, this is actually non-public hearing items. This is items four through 82-inclusive, four through 82-inclusive. The chair would look for a motion to open up the public comment periods on items four through 68, please, four through 68.
Move.
Do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on any items four through 68-inclusive. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to any of these items? We're dealing with items four through 68. Seeing none, the chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on items four through 68-inclusive.
Move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to this, to the consent calendar. We're on to items four through 58-inclusive, four through 58-inclusive. Chair would ask if any of these items need to be pulled from the consent calendar. I do have that we need to pull item number 29 from the consent. Any additional items need to be pulled from the consent calendar?
Number five, please.
Item number five, very good. Any additional? Any additional? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items four through 58-inclusive, with the exception of item five and item 29. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number five, please. Sam, could you please read that in?
Yes, sir. Item number five is to acknowledge the report on alternative cover and refer it to the Solid Waste Committee. Move to acknowledge and refer it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Alderman Quaker, did you have comments?
I do, thank you, sir. I would just like to seek some clarification before we acknowledge the report on this. Just wanted to confirm that the attachment to the agenda tonight of the several memos, starting with the February 7, 2006 memo, and ending with the September 28, 2009 memo, is a comprehensive list or attachment of all of the memos and policies on alternative cover.
Robert, is that your understanding?
It is. Now, we did go through several filing cabinets. That's where most of these were located. We tried to cover every document. There are a number of filing cabinets. I can't say with 100% certainty that there's no other correspondence in the form of a letter or memo discussing alternative cover, but these are all the documents I was able to locate, along with Carl Murbach and Tori Fields out at Solid Waste.
Yeah.
And I want to thank you for the work that you put into pulling this information, and just would like to seek clarification on one item. Mr. Ellis, in your message to me on May 5, 2009.
Alderman Quaker, just a question.
No, this is a fair question.
No, I know, but let me, just a reminder, the motion on the floor is to acknowledge the report on alternate cover and refer it to Solid Waste.
Yes, I.
Is your discussion, is that pertinent to the motion on the floor?
It is, because my question, my question is trying to, there's a sentence in the paragraph that says, "All haulers were notified of this practice regarding alternative cover via a letter, perhaps a couple of years ago." And my question to Mr. Ellis is, is the February 7, 2006 memo, the letter that he's referring to, when he said that all the haulers were notified of the alternative cover practice?
Mr. Ellis, are you able to?
I'm not, I'm not exactly tracking the email you're discussing here, Sam. I'm really not sure.
And I have it right here. It'll take just one minute. And it's the one, it's the one that's, it's the one that's dated May 5, 2009, at 7:57 a.m. And the paragraph, I'll pull out the sentences here, it says, "We, me and the city, have approved the use of this material ID for a long time as a reasonable way of reusing a material for landfill cover. Because we reuse this material, which saves us in purchasing an alternative landfill cover material, hauling it from somewhere else within the landfill, and reduces landfill content, those loads have the tipping fee waived. This has been done for quite a while to assist our operations and to help the local businesses and industrial community to hold down their costs. All haulers were notified of this practice via a letter, perhaps a couple of years ago." And so, my question to you is, is my assumption and understanding, based on previous discussion and last week's meeting, is that you're referring to the February 7, 2006 memo. Can you confirm that for me?
I really can't. This information that you just read, part of that email was correspondence from Jerry Wright to myself, as I was responding to your email. The letter, I'm not sure that that was just simply language that Jerry Wright had given me about accepting alternative cover, the reason we do it, the notification to the haulers. I'm not exactly sure what letter is being referred to there.
Okay, so, I guess the reason I ask that is because that memo was from you to me, and so, I was just trying to clarify that sentence. I guess, looking forward, just so everybody knows, the Solid Waste Committee unanimously last week approved and asked that ordinance amendments be brought forward to define all reduced-rate loads, whether it be recycling, or shingles, or alternative cover. And I think that that's an important step forward, because what we have now, there apparently isn't more than what we have, and we really need to have something passed by the city council, so that we can look forward on this issue.
Okay, very good. Amber, can you repeat the motion, please? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the old, report on alternate cover and refer it to the Solid Waste Committee? Is that the motion on the floor? Okay, very good. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 29. Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Item 29 says, "To approve without stipulations, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Caleb Arseneau of Isis Hospitality to consider an application for a vacation of a portion of utility and minor drainage easement on Lot 1 of Atlanta Subdivision, which is more generally described as located at 1314 and 1416 North Elkvale Road." Says, "Stipulation 1 was removed at committee. Stipulation 2 has been met. Therefore, I move approval."
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Marcia, is that correct? Okay, motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to item number 59. That's the end of our consent calendar. We're on to the continued consent items. These are items number 59 through 68, 59 through 68-inclusive. Is there anyone that wishes to have any of those items removed? Marcia, did you have any to be removed? How about from the council? Seeing none, chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, items 59 through 68-inclusive, per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the, to the end of the continued consent items. We're on to the non-consent items. These are items numbers 69 through 82-inclusive, 69 through 82-inclusive. Chair would ask for a motion to open the public comment period on items 69 through 82.
Move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. I do not have any speaker request forms on items 69 through 82. Is there anyone in the audience wish to speak to any items 69 through 82-inclusive? If not, chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period on item 69 through 82.
Move.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are on to ordinances, and Mr. Wa, the senior vice-chair, or no, who's our vice-chair of legal and finance? That's Mr. Wyffenbach. Mr. Wyffenbach, item number 69. Oh, and excuse me, just for a second, Ron. Just for a point of information, Deb Hadcock is not able to be with us. She is a chair of legal and finance. She is out of town, dealing with a very sick family member, so that's the reason she's not here. So, with that. What's that? Okay, Mr. Wyffenbach.
Thank you. Item number 69, second reading ordinance, number 5635, an ordinance to revise the density requirement in Canyon Lake Overlay District by amending Chapter 1706060 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion is approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. My question is for Marcia Elkins. Marcia, could you just briefly describe what this changes?
The change doesn't alter the substance of the code requirements in terms of the density. It just clarifies it. When we were working with the folks in the Silver Street area, where we've been talking about an overlay there, it came to our attention that the language is not clear. So, it just clarifies the existing intent. It does not change the density requirements. Same on the following item.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number 70, please.
Item number 70, second reading ordinance, number 5636, an ordinance to revise the density requirement in the Fifth Street Overlay Zoning District by amending Chapter 1762060 of the Rapid chapter seventeen sixty-two zero-six-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? We're dealing with second reading of ordinance number fifty-six thirty-six, item number seventy. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-one.
Item seventy-one. First reading ordinance fifty-six thirty-eight, an ordinance amending the criteria for microcell wireless communications facilities allowed on the top of existing buildings and allowing variances through the zoning board of adjustment by amending seventeen fifty point four A of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Since my employer provides wireless services in the area, I'm going to abstain from this ordinance.
Okay, very good. We'll make sure that we know that. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes with Alderman Quaker abstaining. Item number seventy-two, please.
Item number seventy-two. First reading ordinance fifty-six thirty-nine, an ordinance to add streets as permissible expenditure from the utility support fund by amending three point one six point zero-six-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number seventy-three, please.
Item number seventy-three. First reading ordinance number fifty-six forty, an ordinance to add information technology if a structure has a permissible use of capital improvement funds by amending subsection three sixteen zero-six-zero D of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? This is item number seventy-three. First reading of ordinance number fifty-six forty. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item seventy-four, please.
Item seventy-four. Request by Spruill Consulting Inc. for Larry and Gail Motzick for preliminary plat and lot A and B of Addit Subdivision, better than, let me see, located in southwest one corner. There's not really, here it is, thirteen thirty-nine Deadwood Avenue, Rapid City, Pennington County. Motion is for remove with, approve with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval stipulations. This is item number seventy-four. Preliminary plat for thirteen thirty-nine Deadwood Avenue. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to Leighton Finance. Philip, still on Leighton Finance. Mr. Waifembach, item number seventy-five, please.
Item number seventy-five. Direct staff, draft an ordinance amendment to allow private garbage services for certain types of community garbage. Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval to direct staff to draft an ordinance to amend our private garbage service ordinances. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you. Question for Robert Ellis.
Go, go, please.
Are we, are we opening up a can or a box by doing this?
Let's go to Robert Ellis.
We may be, yes. About a year, year and a half ago, there was a similar request that came through legal and finance for something very similar to this, and staff had recommended denial, but council did approve it, and there was an ordinance amendment. And I'll just quickly read that amendment. Notwithstanding the requirements of the section, an exception may be granted by the director of public works source designee upon application to single-story residential apartment structures comprised of a minimum of four dwelling units each, which are the sole residential building components of an approved planned residential development, having a total of at least forty dwelling units, which are addressed on private streets. That was specifically written for one subdivision. This request coming forward is for essentially Star Village area, and they are currently on private and public garbage hauler service. And the problem that we have up there is that the wind blows, and we do have a number of our cans that blow over, causing a litter problem. I think that's somewhat unique just because of the geography up there. We do have high winds. In my opinion, community garbage would probably work better in controlling litter out there. There are also, I believe, about ninety units that are under the jurisdiction of one management group. They do have somebody that goes around and manages their properties, so there are some provisions that would make this work in this situation. I guess, I'm on the fence on this one. I could go either way. But what I don't want to get in the habit of is writing special ordinances for each request that comes forward so that we've got this long ordinance that's specific to these special areas. If we're going to allow this type of exception, I think we should write it where there, here are the requirements if you are going to go with a private hauling service, rather than always amending the ordinance to allow a certain location to go private, so.
Okay, Mr. Quaker, you're still on the floor, sir.
Thank you. So, could we require, when we write this ordinance, could we require a permit that, like a conditional use permit or something to that effect that we need to come through the process, or would it be something that could simply be granted?
Let's go to Robert Ellis.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that conditional use permit would work. I think some of the things that I would be looking forward for and recommending to the council is a maximum distance that they have to haul garbage from the residence to the canister, some type of a management or leasing agency that's overseeing the units. I don't want to have, we're picking up every other house, and every other house is on a community garbage system. I think we need to be kind of the all or none for a subdivision. Some of the other things that I would look for, special circumstances that would make the curbside pickup not very attractive, and up there with the high winds. I think there are certain circumstances like that that I would recommend to this council be evaluated before an exception be granted.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval to direct staff to draft an ordinance amendment. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Whoop, I'm, Eric, where'd Eric go? Did you want to talk to item seventy-five? My apologies. I just got handed a speaker request form on item number seventy-five. Well, I'm sorry, we've already closed the public comment period, so my apologies.
Just yell it.
Yeah, just yell it. Okay, very good. Amber, we took the vote? Motion passed, correct? Very good. On to item number seventy-six, please.
Item number seventy-six. Resolution number twenty-ten zero-nine-four dedicating city-owned property as public right-of-way. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? I was going to say, let's go to Alderman, Ron Waifembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, today I spent some time out there visiting with the airport and looking at the plat there, and one of the, one of the unique situations is both, both sides of that thing is surrounded from the county. There's no city land on either side of that, that rail, that road. And I want to grant access to those property owners there, but I have some concerns about how that access may be maintained in the future and how the roads may be maintained, and what portion or part, where do we draw the line to say? Because if there is, if there is, we hope that there's going to be progress and some economic progress out there, but at what part would the increased activity and those types of things actually pay for their share of that road? I mean, because that's all county funds, but the county won't put anything back into the coffers to maintain that road. And it's kind of a unique situation, or maybe we annex it.
Yeah.
Not sure how to pose that question. Maybe, or just as something that I thought that maybe the rest of council would want to have. I have no problem proving this, but I want the council to be aware of that unique situation that opposes out there.
Very good. And just for a point of clarification, we cannot actually annex that property, and the reason for that is, we're the only community in the state that has a discontinuous city boundary. And we did that through special legislation to protect our airport, but one of the stipulations is, we do not have the ability to use the airport and start annexing out from the airport. It'd have to come from the city side out.
Okay, I understand that. So, that makes sense, but, so that poses an issue there that, that these people going forward are going to have to address out there because, you know, we hope that there is increased traffic there. I'm assuming that that would be great for the airport, great for the county, but pose a problem for the people that were taking care of the road and those on-ramp, sir. But as I said before, I'm behind the project to move forward with it, but it does pose a peculiar situation.
Okay. Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I wanted to bring this back to the whole council because when we had discussed this the other night, we talked about the road being Lot A, and it turns out, and we hardly mentioned Lot B in the discussion, and it turns out Lot B has some potentially buildable area. And so, anyway, I'd just like to see us discuss it more before the decision's made as far as where the, it would be the road, the access, because I know we want to give access, but anyway, that was our concern about it.
Thank you. Robert, I know that one of the things that I directed you to do, basically, with the support of the council was to go out there and basically survey that. Do you have that, okay, can you present it? I think what the council's looking for is a way that we can protect our interests, but also grant access to the adjacent property owners.
Okay. Couple of exhibits that I have here, real quick, just to demonstrate the survey that we conducted out there late last week. Okay, this is, this is Lot A. Right here. And then the road is actually, comes up Lot A, diverges out of Lot A, crosses Lot B, and then curves and goes towards the airport. The parcel that we're discussing is essentially, and I know this is getting messy, that parcel right there. Let me clean this up a little bit. So, the road does go slightly outside of Lot A, and I know that's kind of hard to see, but those are the two lots. Now, when you take a look at what might be developable property, you can see that, I've tried to highlight a triangle here, and it's rather small, but it can accommodate about a six to seven thousand square foot building. That property right there is developable. You can put a structure in there. After you take the road in its current location and create an H lot where you would go fifty feet off center line, would allow you plenty of room for right-of-way, and then add a twenty-five foot setback, you're left with about twenty-seven thousand square feet. So, that twenty-five foot setback could be used for parking or something of that nature. After that twenty-five foot setback, you have about six thousand square feet of building space. So, there is some developable property in there, and I know that doesn't show up very well. It's kind of an irregular lot. What we're looking at doing, the access, the access for the property in question would come off here and could get back to that property. The northern half of that lot is probably less developable. There probably isn't much value to that, but on the southern portion of that lot, just south of the access point, there is some developable property.
Okay, anything else? If not, Bonnie, did you have any additional comments or questions? I still have your light on.
Okay. The county property, and that is where, that's where the property is, where we're trying to get access to, right, is to the county property?
Yes, county property is both this way and this way.
Okay, and the location of where the road, the access, is that, that access at that location, is that the best location for it to be?
Well, I think it makes sense. I'm not exactly sure how the property will ultimately develop, but that's the access that is there today. If you were to drive out there, that's how the ingress and egress the lot. And it lines up on the other side of the road with the access to the residential property, the farmstead out there.
Okay, thank you.
Say, Robert, if indeed, you proposed, you talked about H lots. Explain a little bit as far as how would you propose as far as using H lots to actually plot this off and also to give right-of-way?
Okay. What, I guess what we could do, one option would be, is to plot off an H lot, because the road isn't in Lot A right now. It's actually in parts of Lot B, so we'd have to clear up that issue. So, we'd create an H lot to get the road back in right-of-way, and then we'd actually also plot off an H lot that would give access to the property in question so that they can come across that, and it would leave us with the remnant. It would leave us with this lot right here, which would not be right-of-way, would not be H lot. It would be a lot that could be developed in the future. Once you make this, if you were to take the entire property and make it right-of-way or H lot, you've pretty much given up the opportunity to develop any of that property. So, by making an H lot, you could give access to the property in question. You could also keep that twenty-seven thousand square feet for future development. It would allow that access to line up on the other side with the existing accesses there, and then it would finally clear up that issue with the, the road to the airport being in an H lot.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie, anything else? Okay, very good. Let's go to Jordan Mason.
Thank you. Just to clarify also with this project, Mr. Ellis, on the right-hand side of this, on, I believe it's Lot A two, right over on the right-hand side, is there not another road that also has a long-term parking on the right-hand side? If that's my understanding, I'd just like to verify that.
I might defer to Marsha or somebody else. I don't think I can answer that.
How about Cameron Humphrey? I think it's the approach that you see at the bottom of the page.
The short answer to your question is yes. Right here, along this road, it's termed Aviation Road. There's a private access to airport. They're currently using that for long-term parking. I will tell the council, however, that that access was never, the request for access for that road was never brought to the airport board, because at the time that the preliminary plat was brought to the city, it was assumed that that was a public right-of-way.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mason, you still on the floor?
Thank you. Mr. Humphries, so in this instance, previously you state that it was assumed that it's a public right-of-way, and after talking to our growth management, I'm under the understanding that this land here was donated to the city back in nineteen forty-eight, so I'm wondering why the assumption has changed. I just don't quite frankly understand what, why we're having a problem seeing this as a public right-of-way. I mean, has it just not been called a public right-of-way?
No, it's actually been a private road, and I think that was by intent. A lot of times, especially if you think back to the history of this airport, at the time, this, the airport property was in the county, and the city had to have a method by which they could control access to the airport. So, they left it as a private road, I think by intent, again, to protect the airport. And it's not unusual for airports to have private roads that lead up to the terminal to do just that, to protect access. Sioux Falls is an example. The road that goes to the Sioux Falls Terminal Building is a private road. Fargo, North Dakota, another example of a private road that goes to the terminal. And it is all in a, a fact to protect the airport and the airport's interests. I think that there's a recognition that the airport has a purpose for not only the city, but, you know, the regional areas, an economic engine, and to protect that interest.
Okay.
So, I think that certainly...
Thank you, Mr. Mason. And to answer your question, currently, it is not a right-of-way. That's actually what, if we designate it as an H lot, that's what in essence the council would be doing, is creating that or basically designating that as public right-of-way.
All right, thank you. And I'm just trying to get a better, firmer understanding of this, and so with the airport road, there was never any public money used to build that? It was completely private then, or? I'm just confused on how, so I was under the assumption that it was...
Let's go to Cameron Humphrey.
Other way around.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is clear that that road was built when the terminal was built, and when that terminal was built, there was federal and local money. It's difficult for me to unravel, unravel exactly what money was spent on what part of the project, but it's clear that part of Airport Road was paid for with federal... project, but it's clear that part of Airport Road was paid for with federal dollars with the specific intent to provide access to the airport. And I will tell you that once access is granted to Airport Road, it makes it ineligible for future federal FAA funding.
Mr. Humphries, can you actually clarify that, why granting, so you're, just to clarify, you're stating that if we grant access today, that we are ineligible for federal funding?
That's correct. From the point at which you grant access, all the way out to, for example, Highway 44, that piece of property becomes ineligible for federal aviation funding. The federal aviation funding is for the airport alone. If the city is using that road to grant access to other developments, say residential or hotel, or even an extended parking lot that's a private enterprise, federal dollars cannot be used for that. So it makes that ineligible.
Mr. Humphries, actually, just to clarify again, so I actually travel fairly often, seasonally actually, and I'm just curious, how do you explain then, like the Denver International Airport, Minneapolis International Airport, or actually really any major metropolitan airport in the United States of America that actually has private enterprises directly outside of the airports, and yet simultaneously seem to be receiving those federal aviation funds?
Let's go to Cameron Humphrey.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great question, and the answer is, is that most of those airports charge those entities to do business on the airport. So if they have an off-site parking lot or an off-site rental car lot, in order to actually shuttle their passengers out to the airport, they have to pay the airport, you know, some fee to be able to do that.
Okay, so then it's my understanding, to make sure I'm correct, that we could grant public right-of-way in this instance, but for him to actually drive up onto the airport's property, then as the airport board, you would have the right to then charge a user fee of some kind for, or a percentage, in order to go onto the property to conduct business?
Yes.
Mr. Humphries?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question would be for Robert.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Robert, and maybe, I'll also maybe include Hanny in the question, but the H lot seems to be a solution.
Robert?
I think, representing the city, I would say yes. I'm not sure what Hanny's feelings are on that, but I would say that is the recommendation I would put forth to the council, if you're looking to make this a public right-of-way road.
That would get your plot fixed with the road there, and so I guess my question would be to Hanny, does the H lot work for access to your property?
Mr. Shaffey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Yeah, the H lot would be adequate to provide access to that property, so that would be no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
The reason I just bring that up is it keeps that property from being, I mean, it can be developed then, and it gives him access, and if everybody's happy. I'm not real happy about the non-contributory. I mean, maybe we can annex Mr. Mayor all the way from the airport then. Thanks.
Not touching that one. Okay, let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for Cameron Humphries. Cameron, I need some clarification on the funding scare that kind of got dropped on us tonight, or the lack of funding, because that obviously brought a new element into this discussion that we haven't had before right now. Clarify for me, at what point do we lose the ability to get funding, and what kind of funding do we lose? As I, I think I understood from you that from that point in the road on, back to Highway 44, we would lose funding from the FAA. Is that correct?
That is correct.
From the point that we grant a public right-of-way, correct?
Go ahead.
From, from the point of access back to Highway 44, whatever, wherever that access, the actual act of making it a public right-of-way doesn't make the entire road ineligible, but it is ineligible from that access point to the highway.
So it's the point of where we grant the public right-of-way? Or is it just the fact that there is a right-of-way?
Cam?
It's not, as a matter of fact, I clarified this point recently with the FAA, and it's not, if the council chooses to make this public right-of-way, that action alone does not make that ineligible for fund, for the road ineligible for funding. However, what the FAA will do is they'll look at that road and they'll say, where has the city granted access? And from that point back to the 44 will not be eligible for federal funding. Certainly, we already have two access points on that road, and if we were looking at trying to be able to secure federal funding, we would have to address the two access points that exist. The one access point for the residential, or the house that's there now, would certainly be grandfathered, that would be, there would be no issue with that one. But the access for Aviation Road that you can see, I'm going the wrong way here. Why do I zoom out? There we go. There's an access road, as we talked about here, right there, that currently exists. So from that point down, as it currently exists, the road is ineligible for federal funding, as long as that access remains.
Okay. Now the hard one. In listening to the May 27th Airport Board meeting, it really seems like the real crux of this issue is the competition of a potential parking area. That seemed to be what drove that meeting and what drove the motion of the Airport Board to be in protest of Mr. Shaffey having access. I hear a lot of other reasons, but I keep hearing your voice back on May 27th, and I guess I just need you to help me find my way through that, because at this point, I keep hearing, the minutes of that board meeting, and I'm not hearing any of the reasons that are coming up tonight, I'm hearing the fact that there may be a potential future competitor for the airport. And I understand the enterprise fund, I understand the fact that the airport needs to make money. We have several enterprise funds in town, but somewhere along the line, I think that the populace would really struggle if we stopped every golf bag at the parking lot at Meadowbrook and made them empty out their golf balls that they bought at Walmart, and made them buy them there, because we don't want competition. So help me find my way through what is really going on, Cam.
Cam?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think it's an excellent question, and I think that it's not a matter of competition, it's a matter of restricting access. Does the Airport Board, what is their charge? And their charge is to protect the interests of the airport. And insofar as that is concerned, the Airport Board, on that meeting, there was two, there was two concerns that were expressed. One was traffic along Airport Road. It's a two-lane road, 50 mile an hour, this is near a curve, and we're going to introduce essentially a four-way intersection to that road. So that was, that was the primary concern. In addition to that, there is the question of how do you protect the economic interest of the airport? Certainly, we can address that with user fees. If we, currently, the airport has agreements with off-site rental car companies to do business on the airport, and so that can be addressed. But at the time when this board received the request for access, they said, it is not in the best interest of the airport to grant access because of traffic issues and the competition with existing contractual agreements that they have with the parking lot and the rental car companies. But that can be addressed with, through those off-site agreements. I don't think that that was the largest concern, but it was nevertheless a concern. And I think that the Airport Board discussed that and said, you know, this is not in the best interest of the airport to grant access at this time. And it wasn't in an attempt to try to squelch competition, it was to make sure that the interests of the airport, the economic and the safety interests of the airport were taken care of.
Mr. Davis, you still have the floor.
I do.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm going to substitute motion maybe at hand here, it would be to prepare, to have Public Works prepare the H lot to work in this manner versus the right-of-way. So that would be my substitute motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a substitute motion and a second. That is to direct staff to bring forward the documentation to establish the H lots. Everyone clear on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
I would agree with the substitute motion, but I wanted to comment on what Alderman Davis brought forward, and I wanted some further clarification on this as well, especially in respect to the Sherman Act of 1914, and specifically, to clarify on what I'm talking about, so everyone is aware of what I'm talking about, is what are called exclusionary practices. And earlier you said restricting access to protect the interests of the airport, so I would like to hear how this is not excluding competition specifically in a capitalist country such as ourselves.
Okay. Cam, did you understand that we're, try to keep it tight, because it's really not germane to the motion on the floor, but I think, let's give you the opportunity to answer it.
I can't comment on the Sherman Act. Sorry.
Okay, Mr. Jordan? Jordan Mason?
If, instead, I guess I would direct that to our city attorney to further clarify on that.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. What's being restricted here is access. It's not a, it's not an effort to prevent someone from operating a business that competes with the airport. It's not an ordinance that says no one can operate an off-site car lot that rents spaced airport customers. I don't believe there's any Sherman Act issues here, as we discussed earlier today, Mr. Mason.
I appreciate that. I guess I'm just, I am still trying to find my way through, and as we've discussed previously, in the analogy of the John D. Rockefeller case with Standard Oil and restricting access to our railroads, where our country decided that that was making an unfair and uneven playing field. It seems to me, whereas we have access on the right hand of the road with a long-term parking lot, we are not willing to grant access on the left, and it seems that, as if we are excluding, and I am very tenuous about going down that road, and I just wanted to declare that publicly.
Go ahead. Okay, very good. We're down to discussion. Just for clarification on the motion on the floor, the motion on the floor would be to direct staff to go ahead and bring forward H lots, and just for clarification, the H lots would provide access to Mr. Shaffey. So there's no restriction on that access. And Mr. Hanny, I think, has stated that he's fine with the H lots. Okay, any further discussion? There's a substitute motion, direct staff to come back with H lots. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item 77, please.
Item number 77, approve a request by DTH LLC to consider an application for a third revised project plan for tax increment district number 36, generally described as extending north from Interstate 90 and east of Haynes. Motion is for approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we clarify what the additional costs of the taxpayers are?
Marsha? Is this an adjustment of line items, or is there additional cost involved? Oh, hang on, I don't know what. Go ahead.
This is purely reallocation among line items. The only new item that is introduced under necessary and convenient was the city's administrative fee. As you can see from the revised project plan, it identified the various items that were being reallocated, going through item by item in this paragraph.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
But this does span the entire contingency.
Marsha?
Of 222,000.
It does allocate all of the contingency, correct?
So is the city allowed to, to, maybe I shouldn't, if I wasn't asking, is the city allowed to access that, the monies that are being paid here to handle other liabilities?
Marsha?
They would all be allocated under this project plan, and if you entered into a developer's agreement, then you would have the contractual obligation to the owner to pass those funds on to him. The first step would be the adoption of the revisions to the project plan, and then we would anticipate the next step would be the revisions to the developer's agreement.
So I'm not sure which legal and finance committee member voted no the other day, but Deb, okay, it's my understanding that the council passed a motion a year or so ago that we weren't going to allow any more developers' agreements or sureties while we were trying to work out the situation with Big Sky. Am I misunderstanding the situation?
I'll go to Marsha. I don't think that was the, go ahead, Marsha.
By understanding the motion that you passed with, in the case of the Big Sky, there would be no other sureties that were accepted for improvements related to subdivisions. This is, again, for expenditures that have already been incurred by the developer and reallocating that, and again, a second step would be, anticipated to be the reallocation. After the reallocation would be the revised developer's agreement for this specific TIF.
Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
So the reason for doing this is because the cost had increased for the construction? Did the city manage the bidding process, or how is this being done, where the expenditures are being made and then people are coming back to the city and saying, now we need more money? Can you walk me through how we ended up in this situation?
This project, the developer is the one who bid the projects and administered the project, as called for in our developer's agreement. And so, similar to just projects that the city has completed, at the end of that, once all of the bills are in and we've identified the various cost line items, developers come forward, like city staff has and other tax increment districts, to ask for reallocations to fund those as fully as possible within those outside boundaries established by the total cost included in the tax increment district. So essentially, it's a final balancing of the dollar amounts based on the actual costs that were incurred.
Okay, so did the city know, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, did the city control the bidding process, or did the applicant control the bidding process? I mean, where does the responsibility lie for the increased costs? Is it on the city, or is it on the developer?
Marsha?
The city was not involved in managing this project. It was done by the developer pursuant to the developer's agreement the city entered into previously with the developer.
Okay, so if we would follow through on the intent of the previous developer's agreement, we wouldn't need to approve this? It was a risk that the developer assumed, and we would just be doing this out of the goodness of our hearts, even though we had a written agreement? I'm just trying to explain, when I'm asked, why we, why we did this.
Marsha?
Well, I guess I look at it as the city, when we're involved in tax increment projects, we have the same issues. We try to project as best we can upfront what the specific line items are and include those in a tax increment district. And as you have seen, both with private developers and city projects, very parallel situation at the end of the project, we would see these reallocations. Is there an obligation by the city under the current developer's agreement? No, but certainly, we've addressed these issues when we've been the individual that has benefited by reallocating based on final cost. So ultimately, it'll be a council decision on whether or not that's appropriate. I would just remind the council that the Tax Incumbent Financing Committee recommended approval of this, as did the Planning Commission.
One final question, Mayor?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Marsha, are we, are the taxpayers paying 9% on this, on this TIF?
Marsha?
I believe that the taxpayers did pay 9% in this TIF. All of the outstanding costs have been paid off to the bank. There is a few of these costs that remain that the developer paid for, even though the loan has been paid off of, and there is no interest allocated for those final costs. So these last items that are being reallocated, where the bank's been paid off, have no interest.
TIF will soon expire.
Marsha?
There's two of them on tonight's agenda, I believe that is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Opposed?
No.
Is it just one no, is that correct? Okay, we got two, four, five. Is that a simple majority? Okay, okay, let's go ahead and get the rest of the council in here. Okay, motion on the floor is for approval. Further, and we're going to open this up for further discussion. So let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Mr. Mayor, was it my understanding if a council member wasn't at the dais, that it was an approval?
I'm sorry?
That they automatically approved it when they're not at the dais?
Oh, if they're not present?
Yeah.
No. We really, we need to vote on it?
I'd rather, I assume that I would rather prefer that, but I just remember that happening to me one night when I got caught back there by somebody and came out and figured out that I had voted on something. So it's, I can have another conversation about it. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with one no from Alderman Quaker. Thank you, everyone. Onto the public works items. Items number 78, Mr. Quaker, could you please read that in?
Item number 78 is budget work session scheduling. For the sake of discussion, I will offer a motion to schedule a council budget meeting for September 13 at 5:00 PM.
We have a motion and a second to set the next budget special council meeting for the 13th of September at 5:00 PM. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. It's my understanding there, there was going to be a special budget hearing next week, the 23rd, but it instead is going to be on the 30th? Is that, is that, is there still going to be one on the 30th? Okay, so this one will be on the 13th, and we may need another date as well, but I think the 13th is a date everyone agrees on.
Yep, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
I was just seeking clarification, and I had just removed, canceled my request, but about the 30th date, so that's August 30th is not going to happen then.
Yep, nope, very good. Motion on the floor, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to clarify the time, is it seven o'clock or?
Seven, five.
Or five, you said?
Five.
Five, okay, okay, thank you.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Just to give the council a heads up, because of the timeline, we will have first reading of the budget for 2011 on the next legal and finance and city council meeting. There again, it's a preliminary action. Once we actually hold the, the meeting on the 13th, we can certainly amend it prior to second reading. So it's, it's basically a formality. In other words, we have to keep it on track because we do have to adopt the budget by the second meeting of September. So I just want to give everybody a heads up that that's coming forward. Council members that have been here for a while, we've done this in the past, for those, if you have any concerns, let me know, we can explain it. But there again, keep in mind, nothing is final, and it can always be amended up until second reading. Okay? Motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Bids, Pauline, number 79, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda is the Dealer Demonstrator Pumper Truck, which was opened on August 10, 2010. You can see by the bid summary that we got numerous different bids coming in on various models of trucks. The only bidder that actually met the specifications was from Front Range Fire Apparatus. If you want the details of why the other ones did not meet specification, Chief Mulverin can provide those. The recommendation is to award the bid to Front Range Fire Apparatus for the amount of $432,649 for the first truck with option one and option two for $22,298 and $14,948. And then also for the second truck, also from Front Range Fire Apparatus for $436,038 plus option two only for $14,948. The total bid award would then be $920,881. I would also like to point out that you have previously given authorization to do a capital lease to finance these. These are funded through the CIP program. They are allocated $200,000 a year for fire apparatus. In this instance, although it was greater than the advertising authority, we are able to pay it off in four years at 3.83% interest.
Very good. Can we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second to award this to Front Range for a total of $920,881. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes.
The next item to award the bid on is well number 10, pump replacement. We actually only received one bid in for this. As you see, the advertising authority was $60,000. Engineer's estimate was $75,420. The bid came in from Weston Engineering at $93,990. The recommendation is to actually reject all bids and authorize staff to re-advertise.
We have a motion and second to reject all bids and to re-advertise. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is when, what, where is well 10?
That is actually out in Fountain Springs.
In Fountain Springs?
Mm-hmm. Out at Wood Avenue.
How long has that well been in place?
It's been at Robert Ellis' quite a while.
Yeah, it was back when Spiegel, I think, was looking at relocating or locating in Rapid City. I think that's when that whole discussion and construction started.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to reject all bids and authorize staff to go out for rebids. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 81.
This is a bid for the downtown improvement project, 6 Streets from Kansas City Street to Omaha Street. These were also opened on August 10, 2010. We had an advertising authority of $3,222,185. Engineer's estimate, $3,837,698.54. We had five bidders bid on this project. Hills Material, $3,844,191.34. Mainline Contracting for $4,084,563.44. Site Works Specialist, $4,027,219.27. Heavy Constructors for $2,931,650.06. And Stanley J. Johnson Concrete Contractor for $3,964,298.06. The recommendation is to award the bid to Heavy Construction for $2,931,650.06.
We have a motion and a second to award this to Heavy Contractors for a grand total of $2,931,650.06 and 6 cents. Any discussion on that motion? It's one heck of a bid, we better send them chocolates. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was directly the question I was going to ask you is, is there's, there's a million bucks difference in that bid?
Yep.
I mean, we're not.
Let's go to Robert Ellis. I know that they sat with the contractors.
I understand that, and they've done a lot of work for us, I just.
They did do the Kansas City project, so they're familiar with what these downtown improvement projects are like. We went through their bid, we looked at all the bid items, there was no errors that we saw, nothing jumped out at us. They haven't contacted us to tell us there was an error, so we're making recommendations.
Robert, and I have another question for Robert. The Kansas City project came in over budget, though, didn't it?
I believe it did.
I believe that.
Like significantly?
Yeah, I believe that all the bids during bid opening were over the budgeted amount, yes.
I mean, once it was built, though, I mean, it came in with cost changes or whatever.
It, there were change orders up and down. I don't know how the total contract came in overall. There were decreases as well as increases in change orders.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be interested to know what, what that came in at and what the change orders ended up being. I mean, I'm, I'm fine with this, and they've done a lot of work for us, but I, that's, that's a big difference.
I can certainly provide those details. We do need to award this tonight, though. We have a very aggressive construction schedule, so I do recommend award.
Just want to go on the record as saying what I've said. Thank you.
Very good. And just, you know, for the council, we did have this conversation this morning at Agenda Review about basically change orders, and Robert assured us that any change orders will be very closely scrutinized because of the low bid. We, you know.
They are for all projects. This would be no exception.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to award to heavy contractors, constructors. And let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of second what Ron said, because if they've, if they're known to go over, then we need to take that in consideration because there's, so if we vote on this, then we find out that they were way over on their other, on their other work for us, then what happens in that case?
Now, we have bid items for every item of work that's done, so we know what goes into doing this project. We have everything scoped out, so they can't just arbitrarily say, hey, we need another $100,000 because we, you know, didn't account for that in our bid. That's not how it works. They have a contract with us that pays very specific unit prices for the work that they do. We control the work that's done. If there is something that needs to be added, whether it's a mistake on our engineer's part, it was unforeseen in the field, the council has to approve that work. So they can't just show up at the end of the project and say, hey, we need an extra $500,000. It does not work that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, very good. Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Robert Ellis.
Let's, go ahead.
Mr. Ellis, now, would this be an example of a project now that you have all those extra engineers that you would put engineers out for inspecting and be watching this project?
Mr. Ellis.
There's a very good chance of that. We're negotiating right now with forefront engineering to determine who is going to be doing what on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fisherman Brown. He didn't catch that, did he? Fisherman Brown. Fisherman Brown. Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to award the contract. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. 82, please.
The last bid would be for 7th Street and Kansas Street Overlay Project. The advertising authority was $250,000. Engineer's estimate was $155,002. We had three bidders on this project. Simon Contractors of South Dakota for $149,234.50. J&amp;J Asphalt Company, $145,269.90. And Hills Materials Company for $176,744. The recommendation is to award the bid to J&amp;J Asphalt Company in the amount of $145,269.90.
We have a motion and second to award this to J&amp;J Asphalt for a total of $145,269,000, or, try that again, $145,269.90. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Since I have a close relative works for the Hills Materials Company, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Very good. Make sure that's acknowledged in the minutes. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to award to J&amp;J Asphalt. Signal for the lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes, and with Alderman Gary Brown abstaining. Very good, thank you, everyone. Nothing under items from the mayor. We're on to council items and liaison reports. 82A, change name for 2012 Fund. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I'll start off my comments by saying I recognize that in the official ordinance, the official name of 2012 is Rapid City Economic Development and Civic Improvements Fund. I'm not proposing that we change that name. That's in, in the ordinance. What I am proposing is, is that when we informally listed on agendas and have meetings, we have been calling it the 2012 Fund, and we are approving a, a new five-year plan that goes well beyond that. And so I think that the simplest thing to do would be to simply change our verbiage and start referring to it as the Vision Fund instead of the Vision 2012 Fund. So for short, we could just call it the Vision Fund. And I, I would just like to see us do that. I don't want people to get the idea that the fund is expiring in, in 2012. And I also don't think it's necessary to change the official name in the ordinance, but I think for the purposes of our meetings, we should simply call it the, the Vision Fund. I don't know if anybody has any objection to doing that. There's been some discussion of that already. But for the sake of discussion, I'd like to offer a motion to proceed with drafting a resolution that changes the, the references of 2012 to the Vision Fund.
We have motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? The one recommendation that I may have is, I think it probably would be more appropriate to have this discussion in about three or four months, actually after we adopt the plan. I'd hate to start referring to the current plan by a different name right in the middle of the process. I, like I say, that, that would be my only concern, is the fact that we're right in the middle of adopting the next phase of our 2012, our Rapid City Economic Development Civic Improvement Fund, and I don't want to confuse the public. So, you know, we may want to consider having this conversation in four months, actually after we adopt this round, and then from that point forward, look at changing it. But that is certainly up to discussion. With that, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a formal name?
No.
2012, I mean, is it, or is it just, are you?
It's, it's basically a nickname for the.
But, so, I mean, you could really put anything on her that you wanted to when you were writing the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, I, this really wouldn't require action by us, then, would it?
The, the real name, and Alderman Quaker's.
I guess, Mr. Green looks like he wants, he's grabbing for his microphone.
Mr. Green.
If the council does want to change the practice, in this case, I think I would recommend a written resolution, so there's documentation in the city files of what happened to 2012 and where did Vision come from. It, it seems like the 2012 has been the name of the fund since the, the people that petitioned to put it on the ballot created it. So if there's going to be a change, I think it would be appropriate to document it in the city records.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we could make a hybrid, start the process changed, because obviously you're going to have to change it. At some point, it would make sense to change it into the future, but, so, whatever we decide, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Further discussion? Motion, Amber, motion is to direct staff to draft a resolution to change the name to Vision Fund?
Yes, change the references of 2012 to the Vision Fund.
Very good. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I haven't really thought at this point in time about changing the name, but if we're going to do that, why wouldn't we open that up to the public and kind of make it, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's been in our lives for.
Fifteen years.
Fifteen years plus. Maybe it'd be more appropriate to ask the community to suggest some names. Just, just something to throw out there, because I, I don't know if I'm stuck on the Vision name or not, but something to look at, thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is to ask staff to draft a resolution changing the name of 2012 to the Vision. Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Roll call, please.
Kroger?
No.
Costello?
No.
Quaker?
Aye.
Wa?
No.
Brown?
No.
Mason?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
425? No.
Motion passes on a, or fails on a five to four vote. Very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And just so everyone understands that, at least my understanding is that it had been called Vision 2012, so I was just trying to remove the date. We do need to clarify this, and we shouldn't allow just the discussion to die tonight. So I would like to ask that this discussion be continued to the next legal and finance committee meeting for further discussion.
Okay, we have a motion to take this to legal and finance. Any further discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Posed. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Okay, that does take us to public hearing items. These are items eighty-three through ninety-six inclusive, eighty-three through ninety-six inclusive. Chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items eighty-three through ninety-six.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We do have a couple speaker request forms. First one is from Don Perdue. Item number ninety-one. Mr. Perdue.
Don Perdue, and thank you, Mayor and Council. Getting kind of late, isn't it? I'm here basically on the assessment on the bid. And my property is Thirty-One Main Street. And that building was bought specifically, has a nonprofit, uh, entity, the City Presidents, which we have been operating it that way, uh, for the last eight years. We spend annually on that there, operating it, over eight, um, eighteen thousand dollars a year. That's the contribution of the Perdue family to this community. And consequently, I think it's just a little bit, uh, less than generous to sit there and try to surtax us on the, uh, the bid. I think we already have contributed enough to this community. And so, anyway, I just appreciate if you would consider that and realize what you got, and you got for nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Terry Nelson, item number ninety-one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, want to thank you for being here. It's an exciting time in Rapid City. And the downtown is booming along, we're moving right along. Uh, the board, Bid Board has been formed, ten of us. Uh, officers have been elected. There are five, or the, is it all right if I have the board just stand up, Bid Board, just so that they're aware of? Go ahead and stand up, so they know who you are. So, anyway, thank you very much. But anyway, we're here tonight because we see a timeline that has to be met. Uh, there are activities, uh, planned, uh, construction and everything planned for next summer. And so, we would ask that, uh, the approval of the resolution for levying the assessment, uh, for the Bid Board immediately, uh, tonight if possible. And we want to thank you very much for your support, uh, in the, in the past, and also in the future. And we just look for a lot of good things. So, thank you very much, uh, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Hanny Shaffey, item number ninety-one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey, and I'm owner of a couple of properties downtown. And they're located on Kansas City Street. And the, uh, the bid, uh, or Business Improvement District, uh, and the Downtown Main Street Square are two great projects. Unfortunately, tying them together is not really the right thing to do. And I have major concerns. I signed up for the bid when the bid got started. And the bid was intended to help downtown businesses and allocate taxes, or assist taxes based on, uh, benefit, and also to entice businesses to the downtown. Uh, we were involved with the Rashmont, or what was called Rashmont, which is downtown revitalization project. As part of that project, we actually spent about one point seven-eight million dollars, one point seven-six-eight million dollars, to be exact, uh, to do a plaza, uh, for the downtown, actually larger in size than what is currently proposed. We did not, uh, have in our plan, assessment to any of the downtown businesses. Uh, as far as the assessment as proposed, if you look at the furniture mark, which is only a building away, or a building and a half away from the project, they are not being assessed equally as we are assessed, which we are about two and a half blocks away. I, uh, if you look at the board assembled, I could call it the, uh, Maintenance and Joe Board, instead of the, uh, Downtown Business Improvement, uh, District. And none of the boards are from, uh, Quincy Street, or from Kansas City Street. They're all from Maintenance and Joe, or from the people who are in Zone Two, who are not, who basically were given what they wanted, and therefore, you know, like, we rewarded them by, uh, putting them on the, uh, Bid Board. Uh, as far as the, uh, votes for the, uh, local municipal vote, I know I stayed on the sideline. I did not want to really rock the boat, thinking, well, things will improve, and hopefully, there will be better communication. Unfortunately, with the board establishment, and with some of this tasks, you know, the downtown revitalization was established for Maintenance and Joe, and not for the downtown. And I guarantee you that because of Mr. Brewer, who came before you, to give you a parking plan, which did not represent everybody downtown, even though it were acclaimed to have communicated with everybody downtown. We are in Kansas City Street. We own almost two-thirds of the block, if not almost ninety percent of the block, on the north side. We were not communicated with as far as the parking. And they wanted to install meters and maintain the meters. If you ask the meter ladies, they will tell you that, that one block probably generates more than most of the streets put together, as far as revenue. We don't fight, you know, with the meters, but we should have meters equally. If the downtown revitalization went and advocated meters in Kansas City, and then no meters in Maintenance and Joe, we, we are no longer part of that group. You know, it's because they don't represent our interest. And since they're tying with the bid, and the bid is actual for a main square street, which is really good project, I don't think the funding mechanism for it is really the right way of doing it. I, uh, just want to voice my concerns, and intend to pay my, uh, assessment, but, uh, most likely, I will protest it some way or another. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Eric, uh, item number ninety-one, forefront.
Eric, if you'd identify yourself for the record.
Eric Haikis, uh, business owner, five-seventeen Seventh Street, downtown Rapid City. Mayor and council members. Uh, Hanny made very eloquent comments, very appreciated. There is a counterpoint to his comment, um, and that's kind of specifically what I want to talk about. The assessment is only funding the Main Street Square as its first project. Uh, the Main Street Square may in fact quickly be on its own feet financially, no longer need any kind of assessment. And then there'll be other, uh, uses for that assessment monies. So, uh, yes, there is a connection between the two at this point, but, uh, as the Main Street Square evolves and becomes, uh, its own entity, uh, there will be, like I said, other opportunities for this assessment to use to, to promote, develop, and, um, potentially get other projects off the ground. So, just for a point of clarification.
Thank you. Also have a speaker request form from Rick Askbig, I believe is how you pronounce it. Item number ninety-five. Rick, how did, did that come close?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Item number ninety-five, everyone. And I want you to identify yourself for the record, then the floor is yours, sir.
Rick Askbig, five-oh-eight East College Avenue. Mayor, Councilman, thank you for your time. Um, I got together with the neighbors. They signed a, a quick petition, took us a couple hours, and we've got forty-plus signatures in protest of Walgreens, uh, selling alcohol on their La Crosse Street store. When, when Walgreens went in, they told us that they would never sell alcohol out of that store. So, as a group, when they were going through the process of, of getting it approved, we said, all right, that would be fine. Well, I guess never is three years, because now they're back wanting to sell alcohol. Excuse me. The big concern with the neighborhood is the additional crime, uh, the additional trash, um, the, a lot of concerns from people with children. Um, we've got Walmart, Sam's Club, a convenience store just up the street, there's a packaged liquor. Um, the neighbors feel that putting alcohol, or selling, it's, they want to sell beer and wine, apparently. And they, they're not liking that idea, that all the neighbors around there. Um, it only took us a couple hours to get these signatures. And our question is, why are they wanting to start on the one in La Crosse, when the other two stores are in more of a commercial setting? Uh, I'm aware that they're going to try to put it there, but why start in a residential district primarily, and then work out? Um, so, that's all I really have. And I thank the council. And I would ask that you reject that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Sarah Baron-Hoy, item number ninety-five. There again, I'll ask you to identify yourself for the record, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Sarah Baron-Hoy. Bangs McCullin Law Firm. I'm one of the attorneys that represents Walgreens in this matter. Uh, respecting the, the appellant's argument regarding a promise that was allegedly made back in two thousand and five or so, uh, I would note that there has been absolutely no documentation presented to the council to support that assertion. And nothing in our file indicates that any sort of promise was ever made, let alone any sort of agreement, uh, between the developer and the property owners, that alcohol would not be sold on the premises. And we would ask that the council uphold the planning commission's decision. And if you have any questions for myself, um, please feel free to ask them. And also, I have some Walgreens representatives here as well. So, thank you.
Very good, thank you. I have no further speaker request forms on any items eighty-three through ninety-six. Now, at this point, we do leave the public comment period open for just a short period. Does anyone else wish to speak to, speak to any items, items eighty-three through ninety-six? That hasn't had the opportunity. Not, we'll move on. We're on to the continued public hearing consent items, items eighty-three through eighty-nine inclusive. And I'll go to Marcia and staff, or do we need to pull any of those? How about from the council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items eighty-three through eighty-nine, per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. That does take us to the end of the continued public hearing consent items. Uh, chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing, uh, for items eighty-three through ninety-six inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Item number ninety. Alderman Quaker, could you read that in force, please?
Item ninety is a request by Dream Design International for an amendment to the adopted comprehensive plan to change the land use designation from light industrial to mobile home residential. Located west of Elkvale Road and south of Country Road, recommendation is for approval, and that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. Item number ninety-one, Mr. Wyffenbach, could you read items ninety-one through ninety-four?
No, item number ninety-one, approve resolution levying assessment for Business Improvement District. Motion is for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Wall, who I believe is going to abstain. Mr. Wall?
Yes, I will be abstaining from any discussion or vote on this matter, as, uh, my employer had property in the bid. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We'll acknowledge that. And let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my understanding is, is that the interest rate, uh, that the city would charge is currently, uh, listed in, in this attachment is nine percent. But we are allowed, I believe it's once a year, to, to address that.
Let's go to Jason Green. I believe you're correct, Alderman Quaker, but let's go to Jason Green. And I would refer everyone, there should be a, uh, basically a document in your blue folders. With that, Alderman Quaker. Or, you want to go to Jason Green? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The council has the ability to set the interest rate that is applicable to the assessment going forward. Next year, when a new special assessment is presented, you would have the option of revisiting the interest rate. So, you have the ability to change that today, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, I'd like to offer an amendment, uh, to, the motion to, uh, set the, uh, interest rate at five percent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And I'm going to try and do two things here at once. Um, first one is, Jason, do we have a revised, um, assessment role?
It's my understanding that the Finance Office has provided a revised assessment role. I think you should deal with the amendment on the interest rate first, and then acknowledge that you're approving the revised-
Very good. So, we're going to treat this as an amendment. So, the discussion is going to be about the interest rate only, and amending it to five percent. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
I was wanting to know what the going rate for this would be, if nine percent is what, uh, is listed here, and then Alderman Quaker is suggesting five percent. So, I'm just wondering, like, what kind of interest rate is this, does the city pay for something like this, or, like, what the going rate would be?
Let's go to Pauline, but I think, uh, typically, the city pays between four and five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city, if we were to bond this, this assessment, it would vary on the, the likelihood that we're going to collect the money and, and our ability to repay the bond. What we've seen in other bonding arrangements, not for special assessments, is anywhere from about three and a quarter upwards to about five and a quarter. So, it's, it depends on what the source of funding is for.
Why don't you talk about the latest bonding? The, I believe the latest bonding we did was on the water treatment plant, and that came in just a little over five percent.
That is correct. On the high end of the interest rate is five and a quarter, and the low end, I believe, was around four. So, that was on our water revenue bonds.
And let's see. Alderman Peterson, you stop the floor if you'd like. Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that whether it's five percent, nine percent, either way, it'll be a negligible amount. But I think that five percent is probably in line with, uh, with the current standards of the interest rates across the board. But I wanted to make another comment. There was a comment made in reference to Mr. Perdue, and I'm hoping that, I, I speak for myself, and, and, and most of the citizens that I come in contact with, and, uh, in the appreciation of the presidents that, that are there, that are downtown, that project they've taken on, their family's contribution to the city. And I don't, I don't think that should, I don't think it goes unrecognized, that it is, it is an amazing, uh, situation that takes place down there. Uh, and there's, and several hundreds of thousands of people probably appreciated those statues downtown, and, and the city does appreciate that. And, uh, understand that there is other nonprofit organizations within the bid district, that if they own the property, they're, they're not being taxed currently. So, um, if that's, you know, it's something he wants to entertain by moving his property into, into his nonprofit corporation, he, he still has that option, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor is an amendment, and that amendment would be to, on the very last line of the resolution, change it from nine percent to five percent. Is everyone clear on the amendment? Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion passes. We're back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Jason Green. Now, we need to deal with the assessment role, correct?
Yes, I believe the Finance Office has provided you with an amended assessment role, and I would recommend that you have an assumption, explain the changes from what was noticed. They're all reductions to the individuals.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Pauline, our City Finance Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The difference between the attached assessment and this assessment here is, number one, the removal of the First United Methodist Church for one of their buildings within the bid district, because it has become fully used for religious benefit. So, it would be considered nonprofit and exempt from the bid. The second one, the would be because the Ternak Towers is a condominium set up for that building. And it, the original assessment role had each of those condominiums assessed separately. But because the assessment is on a front-footage basis, we had to go back and max that, that building out at three thousand dollars for their bid assessment. Those are the two differences from the one that was attached.
Okay.
The bottom, excuse me, the bottom line of the, the amended assessment role is one hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars and five cents.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Green, did you have anything else to add? Very good. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I would just like, record to reflect that although there are, the name Costello appears in the assessment role, I'm not related to any of them.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was the first I heard of the condominium changes. Uh, when you, when you say front-footage, I'm, I'm, can you give us a little bit better explanation? So.
Let's go to Pauline.
I will probably actually defer this to Dan Sefner. He's the, the one that helped in preparing the assessment role, and would be probably better able to explain that.
Mr. Wyffenbach, did you want to ask Mr. Sefner?
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Sefner that question.
Okay, Mr. Sefner.
Hang on, let's turn your mic on. Downtown, there we go. Um, Alderman Wyffenbach, the state stature, the way this was set up, is on lineal front-footage, not necessarily on the tower. So, you're looking at the Ternak Tower of being ten stories. So, the assessment role is on the main floor, being owned by the Weezer family. And I discussed in length with them today, and that agreement was made in full. So, it would be capped at three thousand.
So, when you're talking about the front line of your footage, you're just talking about whatever attaches to the-
Whatever attaches around the building.
Around the building?
Yep. Any lineal front footage, that can be side, and any, anything, that, except for alleys.
So, after, after you get into the second levels, even though they face the-
Doesn't matter.
-outer perimeters?
It's all based on lineal front footage.
Thank you, that's interesting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the other question that I had on this, in addition to the interest rate question, was the, the matter of the one annual installment. the, the matter of the one annual installment, whereas with regular property taxes, people are allowed to, people pay twice a year. So, my question is, is are we allowed in this resolution to change it from one annual installment to allow to, to payments and what that would do to the logistics of the process if we allowed that?
I think we've talked about this. I don't think the, the answer is no, we can't, but I'm going to go to Jason Green for an explanation.
That's right. It cannot be done and it can't be divided in two, as the property taxes are. You'd need a change in state law to authorize that. That's something that you could ask us to take to the Municipal League to consider, but it's not available today.
Alderman Quaker, anything else?
I just think that that's something that we should take to the Municipal League later.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you. Permission to ask a question of our City Attorney?
Sure, fire away.
Mr. Green, I'm looking under the South Dakota Code of Fight Law under special assessments, and I'm specifically looking at 943-7 where it says "apportioned," and I was just wondering if you could give me a definition of what the word "apportioned" in that context actually
Mr. Green, do you actually have a copy of state statute in front of you?
I don't at the moment. I'm pulling it up. I can tell you that generally, "apportioned" means divided among. And if you give me just a second here, I can, I can pull up the statute and get the context.
Thank you. I, the only reason I bring that up is, I'm just concerning an item that was brought up previously in talking about leveling the special assessment tax. I'm just wondering, in context of the 3,000 caps on this tax, if that actually allows it to be evenly apportioned? And I guess I'm just looking at that and just wondering in the context of the law.
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, this is not a tax. It is a special assessment, and that's a very important difference. The, the other thing that I will point out is that you can't simply read the chapter on special assessments and come to the correct conclusions about these matters because they arise out of the bid statutes in, in Title 955. 955 required the council to set up an ordinance for the imposition of the special assessment. The council has done that, so the, that ordinance is going to control what method you use to impose the special assessment. Now, the council does have the ability to make changes if you believe that equity demands that, but in this case, I think that you built that mechanism into the ordinance with the cap.
Okay. Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Thank you. And just to clarify, so, in order to be equitable, that is the reason is that we put the cap on? Is that what you're saying, Mr. Green?
Mr. Green?
Partially, but the other part of it is that this, the council is limited to assessing any property to the extent of the special benefit that it receives from the improvements to be funded with that money. And I think that the council rationally determined that no property would receive more than $3,000 worth of benefit as a result of the improvement because that benefit's going to be shared throughout the district. So, the, the cap proposes a couple, or implements several things. One of them would be fairness.
Thank you for the clarification, I yield.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Motion on the floor is a motion to, how do we want to call this here, Jason? Approve the resolution leveling the assessment as amended.
And I think it should be clarified that the res, the, the role that's being approved is the revised role presented by the Finance Officer tonight.
Very good. Is everyone clear on that motion? Who was the motion maker? I'm sorry? Aaron Costello. And that's all right with the motion maker?
Yes.
And the second, or was who? And that's all right with Mr. Wyffenbach? Okay. Want to make sure we cross our Ts here. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval as amended. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with Mr. Wa abstaining. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to item number ninety-two.
Number ninety-two, intent to enter in exchange of land with Neighborhood Works Dakota Home Resources pursuant to SDLC 654 and 92734.1. Motion is for approval.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the intent to enter into an exchange of land with Neighbor Works Dakota Home Resources pursuant to SDCL 6-5-4 and 9-27-34.1. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Ninety-three, please.
Number ninety-three, intent to enter in lease of land with Black Hills Chapter of the American Red Cross pursuant to SDLC, SDCL 912-5.2. Move approval?
We have a motion and a second to approve the intent to enter into lease with, lease of land with the Black Hills Chapter of the American Red Cross pursuant to SDCL 9-12-5.2. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to, if you'd like, just, Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we, when this comes back forward, could we just put the, the address of the property that's being leased?
Sure. That'll actually be part of the lease wanted, Jason, I assume? At least a legal description along with a street address?
I believe the hearing is actually tonight, and the next item on your agenda is the approval of that lease, so this action is actually kind of redundant.
Okay. But, point of clarification, we'll make sure we have the street address on there. Okay?
Just so everyone knows, it's 1221 North Maple.
Further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item ninety-four.
Ninety-four, authorized Mayor Finance Officer to sign a lease agreement between the City of Rappis and Black Hills Area Chapter of the American Red Cross. Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second for approval with the address. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Okay, let's see here. We're on to the non-consent public hearing items, items ninety-five through ninety-seven. Item number ninety-five, please. Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in force?
Item ninety-five is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on request by Michael M. Hickey and Walgreens for a major amendment to the planned commercial development located at 1125 North La Crosse Street. Yield to the floor.
Could we have a motion for discussion, please? Thank you. Do we, we have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there's been some talk back and forth about when this Walgreens got approved, and obviously, they, you know, they, they, they had to make some variances or some things to get this approved because the picture here that I'm looking at shows me that this thing is abutting neighboring properties of about one, two, three, four, five single-family homes, if I'm correct. So, I'm, I'm wondering if we have reference to the variances that were met for this, for this to, to achieve that goal of getting that Walgreens built there because, you know, in essence, sometimes promises get made, and I know how that works. Two or three years later, everybody forgets, and that's a concern that I have. I mean, if, if some, if there was some exceptions made to this variance to get this property to fit, and now they're coming back wanting some more, I want to be aware of anything that may have taken place to get that shoe to fit in this location. So, my question would be for Marcia. Is she aware of any, how this, how this happened in the first place? Butts five particular, to the west, five houses abut this, this particular property.
This project was approved in March of 2005. It was a planned commercial development. The final development was approved on that date in March of '05. It was approved with thirteen stipulations. Looking through the stipulations just to see if there's any exceptions that are granted.
One general question, Mr. Mayor, is that there's no buffer between those, those five single-family properties and, and that Walgreens store.
I believe that there's actually a fence which is typically required. Marcia?
If I might, the stipulations of approval that were granted identified that there was an exception to the Street Design Criteria Manual to allow a driveway access which did not align with the existing access on the east side of North La Crosse Street. It also granted an exception to allow the proposed screening fence to be a maximum of four foot in height in lieu of the required five feet within the required 25-foot front yard setback. Those are the only two exceptions, and again, that does reference the fact that there's, is a screening fence, I believe, on the west side.
Right, I understand that part, but our zoning, our particular zoning in our town is usually MDR and then single-family, in-between commercial, or office commercial or something. These, these people are right up against that Walgreens store. I'm sure that these, these people in these houses have gave plenty to have, to make this thing happen. And everybody knows that I'm always for business rights. I think that's appropriate when they're appropriated and the correct zoning ordinances are applied, but this, this property, it directly affects minimum of those five properties to the west, and then there's a huge MDR, looks like to the south. And, and I believe that the fellow who spoke earlier tonight was convinced that this Walgreens wouldn't sell alcohol out of that establishment. I don't know if that was, I don't think that would probably be a criteria the city would require. I don't know, but it's, it's peculiar that they didn't in the beginning.
Okay. Mr. Wyffenbach, did you have a question in there?
Well, I, I, is there, I guess I'd have a question for the fellow who brought the petition forward, and I can't recall his name. I was looking for his name on here.
It's Rick Asbig, I believe.
Rick, if you wouldn't mind coming forward and asking my, answering my question of how you came to the conclusion that Walgreens told you there would be no alcohol sales there. Do you have any documentation or does the city require that at some point? Or I, I don't think I was on the council when that got approved.
No, we don't, we don't have any, it should be in the notes. At the meeting, we had, there was a church there at one time, and we had it in the basement of the church, and a bunch of the homeowners went. There was a representative from Walgreens. There was also, Pat Hall was there. I think he was probably the realtor on the deal, I'm not sure. I was told that the records were probably, notes were probably not taken, they're not recorded, or were not recorded at the time. We have some elderly people that back right up to it. They're already having trouble with people throwing stuff over the fence that, that they have stole and?
Mr. Asbig, and my apologies. The question was, was asked and answered, and at this point, we don't take any further comment. But if, if he does have any questions for you, he can certainly ask those. My apologies for doing that.
I'd ask Rick where his house is located on here.
It is on College, on the corner of College and Racine, which is the big lot that, College is the first.
Is that first street?
Yeah, just right behind. There's a, there's a line of houses, and then Racine Street, and then our, excuse me, and then our home.
I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels about this, but I, if there's some, something evidence that shows that they weren't going to sell alcohol here, now they've come back after they've gotten the shoe fit into this location and gotten the zoning. And Marcia was there? Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Marcia.
Go ahead, please.
What was existing in that Walgreens spot before they built this commercial building?
It was a church.
So, that's a huge change for this neighborhood. I mean, it's, they've given a lot over there, and I understand at some point, the council zoned this commercial, but there had to be some kind of give and take over there, and I just not comfortable if, if that was the give and take, that, that, that we're letting this move forward, beings that they abut that property there. I mean, in most locations that we do commercial development aren't, they don't butt up against these properties with this kind of a high traffic and, and those types of things and, and the alcohol sales and contributing to those high volumes and high traffic volumes. So, I'm not sure how we go about finding out if there's information available or not. Evidently, it's just if there's nothing documented, I guess that's just the way it is.
Marcia, do you have anything in the documentation?
The file I have with me is the final development plan file. I would need to go back and research the rezoning and when it was zoned and the like, and pull those minutes to have that. We typically don't include all that research when we come to a discussion like this.
Mr. Mayor, I think we're supposed to make motions before we start talking, right? If somebody else wants to talk, I can make a motion.
Only if it's, only if it's a continuation motion.
That's what I want to do.
Oh, then, yes, you cannot do that.
I want to move to continue for, to give us, give Marcia time to, and usually thirty days is the time she needs to be realistic for her to come back.
Let's, let's see if someone else wants to make that motion. Very good. Let's go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I'm a little unclear on, is the appeal just based on liquor? Because I see all these Planning Commission's decisions. Were those decisions made years ago, right?
Marcia?
As noted, the final development plan that allowed the Walgreens to be constructed was approved in 2005. At that time, they were not proposing to have any on-sale liquor of any type, and because of the way the licenses are structured for them to actually sell this for consumption off-site, essentially, you would buy a six-pack of beer or a bottle of wine and take it home. The way that licenses it falls under the description of an on-sale liquor establishment in the zoning code. So, that is what they're proposing at this point in time in the major amendment that's come forward.
Okay, I, does anyone hear from Walgreens?
Yes, there's a couple of representatives. Do you have a question?
I, yes, I was wondering what, in your business plan, you didn't start off selling liquor, so I'm just wondering why that's changed? Or also, do all of your Walgreens sell liquor?
Okay, for the record, if you would please identify yourself, both of you, if you would.
Yes, Sarah Baronhui. I will?
I'm Rob Holzel.
Okay, very good, thank you. Please go ahead.
I would first refer you to the fact sheet that was linked to the agenda, and it does give a fairly detailed description of sort of the history of Walgreens, why liquor has not been, been sold, why it's now going to be sold, and a few answers to some of your other questions, but I'll turn it over to Rob.
What was your question? Bonnie?
I'm wondering if your, your other Walgreens stores sell liquor, like, throughout the country?
Yes, they do.
Or in this state?
The Spearfish Walgreens sells beer and wine, and that's the only intent, is just beer and wine, no liquor sales.
Okay, I'm just kind of lump all that stuff together because it all gets you drunk.
Okay.
Um, so why your, yeah, because when you first came in, apparently, you weren't selling liquor, and now you're wanting to sell liquor, so I'm just trying to figure out why that's changed.
You know, consumer needs change, and we've just decided that it's something that the consumer wants, is to be able to pick up a, you know, a six-pack of beer or a bottle of wine. So, we're really just trying to push this for the consumer and what the consumer really
Okay, thank you. I guess my, I have concerns about selling this liquor right there. I don't see that there's a real need for it, and obviously, the neighbors don't want it, and so I would be leaning toward, on the neighbors on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for the Walgreens.
Okay, go ahead, please. Let's go ahead and state your question.
Hi, Gary. I'm Lawrence Stanley. I actually manage a store up in, in Spearfish. I opened the one that we're in question on, so.
All right. Describe to me how you're going to display and how you're going to sell. If I want to come in here and I want to buy a bottle of beer, or can I just take out one bottle, one can?
Single bottle of beer is against company policy. It would have to be a package, like, six-pack. Smallest, we have a six-pack up to an eighteen-pack.
So, this will be displayed how, then, and what, what kind of a?
I have six feet of a warm beer, beer display, and I have six feet of a wine display, and then I have two doors. I don't know if you're familiar with their stores. I have two doors and a cooler that are both cold beer. And they are all six-packs, twelve-packs, et cetera. There is no singles for sale whatsoever.[1797.51] There is no singles for sale whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
And at this time, I'd say it is against company policy to sell a single can.
And that's all you would, you're expecting to, to sell? You're not expecting to expand it?
All I'm expecting to sell.
Move it up front, you're going to have it in the back of the store, is that it?
Uh, actually, it's over towards the coolers, where we can control it a little bit better, and actually, it's just a twelve-foot section of warm and two doors in the cooler.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also have a question for the gentleman from Walgreens.
Go ahead.
Do you have any projected, uh, sales volume of, I mean, obviously, you've got an idea of what you're doing in Spearfish, do you relate that that would be similar here, greater or less, and what kind of volume of, of your sales are you looking at?
Dave, a little history from that, Walgreens years ago got away from the liquor sales, and as time has evolved and, and retail has changed, it's become a convenience-type item, and that's why, as a company, we're getting back into it slowly, we've probably got a couple thousand stores across the country right now that do it, um, I actually got my license, I believe, in March, up in Spearfish, we put it in immediately, and we're talking about a hundred and fifty, two hundred bucks, two hundred dollars a day, so it's a very minimal, it's basically walk-through traffic, where somebody walks down that aisle and they see that we carry it, uh, it's certainly not a destination spot for beer or wine, I don't know that that's our intent, it's, we're a convenience store, more than anything, and I think the intent is to be a convenience while someone's in the store, um, answer.
Ken, Mr. Davis, you still have the floor.
Thank you, I need you to clarify that couple hundred dollars a day, since I'm not a, a purchaser of that product on a normal basis, so, what, how many six-packs a day, how many twelve-packs a day, what's that related to, Lauren?
To be honest with you, Dave, the majority of what I'm selling, about probably twenty-five, thirty bottles of wine a day.
Okay.
And then maybe seven to ten packages of beer, I'm not setting the world on fire with it, that's for sure, but it's, it's just the convenience of being there, that's why it's only a twelve-foot section.
Okay, so if you related that to the amount of canned soda pop that you sell, how many twelve-packs of pop might you sell in a day?
God, you're putting me on the spot, um, that's probably fifteen to twenty percent of our soda sales.
Okay, what, what I'm trying to get at is if there is a, why there's more of a, of an issue of, of trash or litter, because it's one product versus another, and if there's eight times as many of, of the one sold, that, that's where I was trying to go with that, so I think you've given me an idea that's really pretty minimal by comparison as far as the numbers.
Well, and I don't, can't sit here and give you those numbers, because as a goal, obviously, we, we want to sell more of everything, so...
I, I do have one more question.
Go ahead, please.
Lauren, at your store in Spearfish, have you had any problem at all with the people buying the alcohol product, consuming the alcohol product in the proximity of your store?
It's never happened.
Thank you, very good.
Very good, let's go to Alderman Bill Waugh.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, just a quick question for you, sir, from Walgreens, uh, what kind of corporate policies do you have regarding, uh, the training of your employees, uh, I mean, what kind of rules, uh, do you have in your store as far as beer and wine sales?
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Walgreens policy is, before anyone is allowed to sell, they have to go through, which we call PPL, which is our learning system, and it's a way that teaches them how to card everybody, our system, when you scan a product, immediately requires that you check an ID, it's actually forty years old or younger, where you look at this person and make a mental decision, is this person over forty or under forty, if they're under forty, they cannot have the product without a, a driver's license.
Go ahead.
Thank you, one more question, what happens to an employee if, if, uh, you know, I know Spearfish does, Rapid City does, sting operations, and they bring in underage folks to buy, what happens to that employee if they are, uh, caught selling liquor to a minor?
They could be up to terminated.
Okay, thank you, that's all my question.
Can you see, we prefer the term, uh, what do we call it, not sting operations, but compliance checks.
Fine.
Is that right, chief, compliance checks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good, okay, any further discussion, let's go to Aaron Costello.
It's called bust those cheaters, um, in the fact sheet, um, there is a line that really caught my eye, under product assortment, I'm going to read it in entirety, "The beer selection will consist of six-packs, twelve-packs, eighteen-packs, and cases only, there will be no single serving or any other variation that would be considered conducive to alcohol abuse." Now, when I read that, it almost implies that if I were to buy a single can, that would be conducive to alcohol abuse, but if I were to buy an eighteen-pack, it would not be, I need an explanation here.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Maybe we need to find the person who wrote this.
I guess the way I would interpret that is a single can, or a quart bottle, is where that person's going to go out in the parking lot, consume it on the grounds, I think when you have a closed eighteen-pack, your intention is to take it home, I, I'm not sure how else to explain that.
That's a fine answer, I'm not really sure there.
That would be my intention of a single bottle.
Pardon?
That would be my interpretation of a single sale.
I appreciate that, it certainly is befuddling, um, yeah, I will yield, because I see more people here.
Okay, further discussion, Amber, just clarification, motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations, correct? Very good, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
I just have a quick question, just to, uh, make sure, um, I'm thinking of exactly the correct area, but is, isn't my understanding that the Walmart right across the street from you currently, actually, uh, directly diagonal, also sells, uh, wine and beer?
Correct.
And then, uh, the, uh, gas station across the street, that also simultaneously has...
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, I, I guess I'm just failing to understand why, uh, frankly, why is this, uh, why is this an issue that needs to be brought before the council, I mean, I just, if we could have that answered.
Yeah, Marcia, it's a requirement, it's a major amendment to, um, and so that's why it has to come in front of the council, uh, minor amendments can actually be approved administratively, but major improvements, uh, to a planned commercial development actually have to come to the council for their approval.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Did I get that right?
Yield.
Almost got it right, well, it's late, go ahead, correct me.
The, the action of the planning commission would have been final in the absence of an appeal.
Oh, that's right.
But parties appealed it to the council, that's why it's in front of you.
Okay, very good, Marcia?
The other element that enters into it is because they are selling wine, and because of the way the wine and beer licenses are classified for off-sale.
Okay, very good, further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify, uh, the comment that Mr. Mason made about the, there's a gas station across the street, is that across La, La Crosse, or just right across Anamosa that is selling?
It's across La, La Crosse, it's, it's basically in the corner of Sam's Club, it's a Senex.
Okay, so, um, are there, uh, individual homes next to, uh, Sam's Club and Walmart?
There's the apartments to the, directly to the east, yes.
There's apartments, but not single-dwelling family homes, I see a big difference in the sense that children are probably sent to Wal, uh, to Walgreens to get milk and things like that, whereas I doubt if, um, there would be sent, at least hopefully not sent, across the major street, I wouldn't even like to cross it, it's kind of dangerous out there, um, over to, um, Walmart or that gas station, so that's another, uh, what I see is a big difference between this location and the other locations, and, so then, when you're kind of looking for consumer convenience, then it's like there's lots of other places where people can buy this, and because North Rapid is doing a lot, trying hard to, um, improve their neighborhoods, and, uh, protect their neighborhoods, I think we need to give them real serious consideration about this, uh, request, that that not, uh, be allowed. And then also, I have a question for, uh, Walgreens people, um, at the Spearfish store, is that located right up against, uh, single-family homes?
Yeah, it actually is, it's a lot the same layout as the one on the cross, I have single, actually, it's not homes, it's condos behind me, where there's probably fifteen homes behind me versus the five that there is on the cross.
Okay, but you said they're condos, though?
If, if they're attached, right.
Okay, so it's not, it's a little different with having kids in the yard, or, anyway, in my mind, it's different, um, is the Spearfish store the same size as this store, or is it bigger, smaller?
Exact same square footage.
Okay, um, how many feet do you give for dairy products in your Walgreens?
I have six feet, two doors in my cooler for dairy products.
Okay.
For meat, cheese, milk, et cetera.
Okay, so, um, and what about, like, for bread?
Uh, bread has a three-foot warm shelf.
Okay, so, I mean, I consider, when I think family living, I think people need bread and milk, you know, I've made many trips to the store because I'm out of bread or milk, and so you're given those less space than you're given to liquor, so...
Actually, I have a thirty-six-foot run of actual groceries, too, though, that goes with that.
Okay, well, um, and this isn't, um, I'm just trying to protect the people, these neighbors, that got more signatures in two hours than I got in trying to get a petition signed to run for office, because it certainly took me longer than that, and so I'm trying to protect them, and, um, anyway, thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Ron Weifembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I got a question for any of the Walmart, any of the Walgreens people.
Ken?
My question is, were you guys here when this Walgreens was being built, did you sit through the negotiation process? This Walgreens is put into a residential area, not, what, it had to be rezoned from, I'm assuming, office commercial into general commercial, and usually, when you talk about condominiums, those are MDR, which is a buffer for general commercial, these are actually single-family homes, this is my issue with it, uh, I think I've made myself pretty clear that the fact that, if, I believe in, in business rights, but at, when we make special exceptions to move properties into areas where, you know, they probably really shouldn't go, but they did go there, so my question to you would be, were you here during these negotiations?
No, I was not.
Okay, then I want to ask a question to Rick, the homeowner. And Rick, were you here during the Walgreens negotiations?
Yes, I was.
And you owned your house over there in that area?
Yes, I do.
That's, that's directly affecting you, obviously?
Yes, and the signatures on the petition are from single-family homeowners and voters.
I, I understand you're, you're, I understand where you're coming from here, and everybody on this council knows that, I'm an advocate for, when things are done correctly, that, that I would probably err on the side of this business, because, but the, the issue for me is, is this property was shoehorned into a residential area, the residents over there gave a lot up, there was a reason they didn't put this alcohol in at the time they built the place, because it probably wouldn't have flew at that point in time, so you get the old foot in the door, and then you come on later, when everybody else is gone and dissipated, but unfortunately for them, Rick's still here, Rick was in the original negotiations of, of when he had to give, to let the church go, let him rezone that to general, they did that, I think the council at least should take some time to consider, and, and, uh, how this will affect that neighborhood up there, I know that this council turned down it, and I was the only one that voted for the casino, to go in a strictly-zoned general commercial area with no housing abutting them, so I'm hoping that the council gives you guys, gives Rick and this, these homeowners the opportunity over there to make their case, that this did, that was the place, they were there when the Walgreens was negotiating, to shoehorn into a residential neighborhood over there, uh, condominiums are MDR, they're different than, than single-family homes, these are single-family homes that are but, it's an entire neighborhood that it, it affects, um, I, I would just like the council to give them that opportunity to look at this, and maybe have our staff look back a little bit, and see what really was negotiated at the time.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, my question would be to Chief Allender, please.
Go ahead.
Chief, uh, with existing establishments located in this area that have been mentioned that sell alcohol and that, what's the police enforcement, uh, in that area, what, what problems have you had, if any, give us a little history, please.
Chief?
Boy, I'm, I'm scared of that question, that, there's no shortage of, uh, alcohol availability in this neighborhood, or anywhere in this town, we deal every day, and practically every hour of every day, doing some type of enforcement related to alcohol, um, for me to address this particular thing is going to be a little more difficult than I can do right at the moment.
Ken? Thank you, Mr. Brown?
Thanks, and you did not have any adverse comments when this went through planning commission, any recommendation?
Correct, um...
You know, thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, um, I wanted to, uh, first, uh, respond to Alderwoman's, uh, Peterson's comments, um, I am also interested in protecting the, uh, people of this area, I guess I am just, uh, I am having trouble understanding, um, due to the proximity of other establishments that are also zoned commercial, um, why in this instance, um, it is, uh, so different, given that directly across the street, um, you have another establishment, and, uh, I guess what I'm interested in is, I would also like to ask the homeowner of the area of what his, uh, concern exactly with the sale of alcohol, and what he believes the effects of that will be on the neighborhood.
Okay, Rick, would you please identify yourself, just for the record?
Rick Askbig.
Thank you.
Um, well, ev- every comment that I got from people signing this said, "We don't need any more alcohol in the neighborhood," our concerns are, there's been people that, have been sleeping on lawns, throwing trash, we found, they go, and, and I have nothing against Walgreens, uh, we shop there quite a bit, but they, people go over there, they will get cold medicine, and if they have a cold, they're not going to drink the whole bottle and throw it on yards, but they are, so they're not using it for colds, um, it, what concerned me the most when, when we got this started is just the fact that, the big response, I mean, people were literally trying to grab the petition out of my hands to get it signed, and that told me that the neighborhood does not care to have any more alcohol sold close to it, and, and I respect their, uh, business aspect, I, I see where they're going, and, and I'm a small businessman myself, and, but, as a homeowner, and, and trying to get the neighborhood watch going, I have to respect what the, what the neighbors around me are telling me, that we've got a problem, and we don't need to add to that problem.
Ken, Mr.?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, you still have the floor.
Um, actually, I'd like to ask an additional question to Mr. Askbig, um, sir, do you think that, uh, you mentioned that, uh, there are currently cases of drinking, uh, other substances that are not alcohol, uh, do you think by disallowing, um, Walgreens, uh, to sell alcohol of any kind, that it will completely eliminate the problem?
No, I do not, um, I'm not, I'm not that naive, I know that we've got a lot of work to try to clean it up, but no, I do not believe that.
Um, with the effects that you've listed, sir, um, do you think it could be due to a result of, uh, enforcement currently, of actually patrol, I'm just, uh, trying to find out with the effects that you've given me of, um, sleeping on lawns and, uh, abuse of current substances?
No, when we have a problem and, and we call it in, we have a pretty good response, I mean, we don't have steady patrol, but neither do a lot of neighborhoods.
Thank you, sir.
Further discussion. Can you, I think we're missing a couple council people. Can you see if there's, I think we're winding down, ready to get to a vote. Okay. Motion on the floor, Amber, is approval with stipulations, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. I see no further lights. All those in favor signify.
Yes, and there's a light on.
I know. Here's the problem. When I start the cadence, I usually do not allow additional conversation because then people have a tendency to trip in right before we take the vote.
Okay. I'm, I'm still a part of the plan just because I'm new, I think, is that I really still don't understand exactly what we're voting on because there's approval with stipulations, and I don't...
Okay. Marcia? This was a major amendment to a planned commercial development, and that is what is required to allow for alcohol sales.
Correct. And if you note, stipulation number one is that the use is allowed within the planned commercial development shall be limited to retail store and off-premise wine and malt beverage sales with no on-premise liquor consumption allowed. That stipulation was crafted to specify exactly what would be allowed on this site.
Okay. So, these other things about a building permit and all that are listed on here, those don't apply to this?
Marcia?
They do apply to it because this is the whole development of the site. But again, that would be for any additional improvements. They would still need to have the building permit construction. If they were to do new coolers inside the building, they would need to have a building permit. They shall conform continually to the architecture of the building plans that have been submitted and are attached. Again, the setbacks have to be in place that were originally adopted. This is a major amendment, so we need to also specify what those stipulations were that were part of the original approval. So, I was just restating those.
Okay. So, it's just restating what was originally put on. So, the only thing new is to allow them?
Clarifies that the retail use is allowed and off, including the off-premise wine and malt beverage, but not allowing any on-sale consumption.
Okay. So, this is an appeal, though. So, because the planning commission's already approved this. So, if I wanted to vote against it, I would vote, I would vote no. Is that right?
That is correct.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I'm just a little confused about all this.
Okay. Very good. One more time, Amber. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations, correct? Seeing no further lights. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Costello?
No.
Quaker?
No.
Waugh?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason? Wyfenbach? Davis? Adcock? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion fails on a five-to-four vote.
Correct.
Yep. Jason, we don't need to do anything else to dispose of this motion. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item number ninety-six. Right. The moat, and it was an appeal.
For approval.
Yes. That's correct, Jason. The, the item is disposed of, correct? Okay. Very good. Item number ninety-six, please. Mr. Wyfenbach, if you could please read that in. Microphone, please.
Excuse me. Item number ninety-six. Second reading order is fifty-six thirty-four, an ordinance amending section seventeen oh six of chapter seventeen of Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property as requested by Dream Design International Inc. for rezoning from general agricultural district to mobile home residential district. Rapid City, Pennington County, South Dakota, located west of Alkville Road and south of Country Road. And the motion is approval?
We have a motion, second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Pauline, the bill list.
The total bills for tonight total four million nine hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
No additions?
No additions.
We have a motion, please. We have a motion and a second for approval of the bill list for a grand total of four million nine hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I can't take credit for this question, but I was looking through that bill list, and how many cell phones and cellphone contracts does the city have, and do they ever bid those contracts?
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, a few years back, we had switched to Altel or whatever that company was called at the time. And because of the service area, we ended up going back to the Verizon. We do get a government discount, which is basically about eighteen percent off of our bill. We have multiple phones for, within departments. Each department head determines what, how many phones are needed for their department. I believe, like, with the police department, there's, and the fire department, there's quite a few. In my office, we have one. So, it just kind of varies department, department. We have one overall contract, but each line still gets a bill so that we can code it to the proper cost center.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a report back on how many phones we have and then what the total bill is? Because I, there's page after page after page. I tried to, I can't add it up.
Sure.
So, if, if you could, I guess, request that at some point.
We'll bring that back to the next legal finance.
Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of the bill list as published. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. One, Mr. Preston, or Mr. Preston, Mr. Green. Executive session.
For the purposes permitted by SCL one dash twenty-five dash two.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, second to go into executive session as permitted by SCL one dash twenty-five dash two. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion passes. We're in executive session. Second, come on to executive session. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed. Motion to our executive session. Mr. Green?
Mayor, I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to make the counter offer in the contract negotiation matter as discussed in executive session.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Mayor, I'd ask the council to direct the city attorney to file an unfair labor practice claim with the Department of Labor against AFME.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second? Okay. We have a motion and second to adjourn. Alls in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.